Good evening. Welcome to the December 18th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. Appreciate you all being here tonight. Tonight, we have a really special treat because we have scouts from Dan 2804 and, excuse me, 3804 and 3805 here with us. I think all fifth graders that are here to help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask that the scouts stand and help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And for you to all stand with us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, scouts. We appreciate you guys being here tonight. They come in and we spoke a little bit before the meeting as part of one of their, it's not really a merit badge, right? You guys don't get merit badges at this point, but part of their requirements for the Cub Scouts. So we appreciate you guys being here. Hopefully, you'll learn something about civic process tonight. All right. We have a very, a lot of different meetings and a lot of different things going on tonight. So we're actually going to take these meetings in a little bit of a different order in order to be as efficient as possible with everybody's time. So at this time, I will move that we recess the city council meeting.
Second.
With a motion and a second to recess city council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now in recess. And at this time, I will call to order the December 18th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater Public Works Authority, a special meeting. And on this agenda, we have a consent docket, which includes meeting minutes from our last meeting and also a deed regarding Block 34. Trustees, questions, comments, or a motion on consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. With nothing else on the Public Works Authority agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn the Public Works Authority, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Public Works Authority meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I'm going to call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for December 18th, 2023. Several items on this consent docket. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that consent docket is approved. Is Mr. Sitten here? There he is. I'm not sure if we gave you a heads up, Mr. Sitten, that we were going to move you guys forward on this one.
We were just out there.
Are you ready to go?
Yes.
All right. Well, we're going to go ahead and go to item five. General orders, 5A is our Rural Water Advisory Board Semiannual Report presented by Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
If you could pull the mic down. Sorry, the mic.
Is there a mic here? I'm Robert Sitten, Chairman of Stillwater, I forgot exactly what I was supposed to be Chairman of, Stillwater Rural Water Advisory Board. And we meet quarterly. And so my report, if you want to follow along with me, kind of looks like this. And I made my report a little bit differently this time because we have newer people that are on board, plus we have a new city manager. And so I want to welcome her. And of course, I think everybody else is the same except for our city manager. And I want to thank all the previous SUA members to helping us achieve what we have achieved in the past and hopefully what we're going to achieve in the, in the near future. My first report, I usually have the number of gallons in this one, the number of gallons billed and the number of gallons that we use showing water shortage and stuff like that. But I wanted to bring a little different report this time to update everybody as to how our system came about. And so that's on attachment one, which is our history. And along with that history, it kind of tells, tells you a little bit about how and why the city purchased us and that the city was wanting to become regional water provider. And that is why I'm here. And from being a regional water provider, we wanted to have a little bit of representation. And so if you go to attachment number two, then it kind of tells you what our responsibilities are as an advisory board and why we meet and what we should be doing. And with that is the number of reports that has been done in the past. And I'm working with David Barth right now to get those reports current. There for a while, you all have had a change in, in people coming in and out of our meetings. So some of our reports have been dropped. But David's doing a good job on getting that up to date for us so in that way we can carry on with those reports. Does anybody have any questions up to that point as to our history and why we meet?
I don't see any questions, but I do appreciate that information. It's helpful for those of us who have not been around for the length of time that you guys have been serving.
Right. Most of you all don't, don't know, you know, how or why the city has even purchased us. But I've been trying to pull this report together and do these reports since 2010. So I welcome the new city manager because I've been through two others, previous managers. So you're the third one that I presented to. Our third attachment, which is a report that Stephen Mayo and I have kind of put together, we went on exploration. And I would like to have him come up and quickly present that one. And then I will come back up and finish out my report.
Okay. That's the one right there. Just leave that. Okay. Yes. My name is Stephen Mayo. And just a little bit of who Stephen Mayo is, is that I'm an engineer and I worked for Exxon for almost 11 years. I worked for ConocoPhillips for 28 years and, and I worked around the world. And I'm a registered professional engineer in Oklahoma. And, and so this report is pretty much what I did as an engineer for those two companies, specifically around capacity enhancement. Everybody was always wanting capacity enhancement for nothing, basically. And so what we were trying to do is to find small steps that could be incrementally made within the water system and also to find out where the YOSS zone specifically was, we could enhance its, the water production to that zone. And so what we did is we tried to figure out where we stood within that YOSS zone and, and also within the water system. The final conclusions are in the back. And we did find some small improvements that made some big differences in the overall production of water to the YOSS zone and also to the entire water system. And so what I'd like to do is to say that we'd like to do this again at some point in the future. And I really appreciate the help the city employees gave us in going through this report. And in the final report, we negotiated almost every word that went into this report. So I really appreciate their help in putting this report out. And I thank you for allowing us to, to give this report to you. Do you have any questions on how the details of this report were put together?
Trustees?
Could you give us some examples of some of those small improvements that made a difference?
Well, I, I guess the biggest one was the pumps going to the, to the Payne County Rural Water Corporation, number three was, there was a metering station at the pump and it was rated for, I think, 200 amps or 100 amps. And all we needed to do was to call the CREC and update it to 200 amps. And that's, that's in here. And that didn't require any outlay of money from the city. I think that that was upgraded for them. Another one was the pumps were backed up on their curve because they were burning out. And, and I think you all have updated some, have something that's due to be installed in February and have approved that. And I think that will allow for VFD changes. And that's relatively small money in terms of the money associated. And let me see. I refer back to here. Some of the more expensive items though is a water tower. That there's a lot of people in the zone that we're talking about that have water restrictions because of water pressure. And that's an environmental concern.
Mr. Mayo, we appreciate the report.
Okay.
I want to make sure that.
No, no, no. I just wanted to say I was almost done when I was trying to answer those questions. So, and I do appreciate the, the city's help in getting this report together. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
And I'll finish up on my last attachment, attachment number four. This is one that the city has seen ever since 2010. And this is the amended Exhibit C, which we signed a contract with the city with. And the items one through 32 that the city's supposed to be working down on. And as you can probably see on page one of that six, that some of the things were supposed to be done within the first two years and they're still in need of, you know, being addressed. And we go all the way down through certain ones. But what we're really wanting to push for right now is just like what Stephen had mentioned about the water tower, the water line in between the new pump station that you all are hopefully in the plans of doing. So then that way we can increase the pressure and availability of water out there because we have people that's ready to build out there, ready to put more meters in, but we're limited. So if we're limited on meters, then that means that you're limited on income out there. Any questions?
Not at this time. I appreciate it.
So my recommendations on mine would be for the board to go ahead and approve and work with the city to, or work with our, our people that's back here behind us to continue those reports, giving us those reports. So then that way I can continue to bring forth the numbers that you'll see next time I bring as to water pressures and stuff like that. Please continue to work on the YOSS pump station. That is in the works, just like what Stephen Mayo has said. And, and then work on our flushings. We want to make sure that all of our, our end of the lines get flushed as needed. And the city has been a little bit slow on some of that because of the fact that they haven't had the manpower to do that. And each one of our patrons, whenever theirs does get flushed, then we usually get a call thanking because they've got fresh water. Any questions for me?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate, appreciate the report.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of folks who are signed up to give public comment on this report. Mr. Bryce Campbell, you could come up and introduce yourself. And just as a reminder on comment on items not here for public hearing, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. Appreciate it. My name is Bryce Campbell. And I guess I'm just here as a citizen in the water district that he's speaking of and just making some general comments. Anyways, regarding the YOSS improvement project, and I'm also glad that we got the 39 million. I think that's for water projects. Is that right? Okay. Hopefully that goes a little further. Anyways, I'm just hoping that they make it the YOSS improvement project at the top priority. And the reason I think that it might need to be put even as urgent is because of things like economic development, growing our town. It's hard to grow a town when you can't get water. You can't, you know, you can't, you can't build people and you can't give them the product. And so that's, that's a problem. You know, for new water expansion, should be an investment for Stillwater if we can provide the meters. But I can't develop, but it's not just for me, it's for many, many others. Even my parents, I'm kind of jumping around. My parents have a house out there and, and many times, I don't mean 20, but probably 10, 15, my mother comes to town and this is a true story. And she's got soap in her hair and I'm like, what is that about? This is true. And the water was such low pressure, she couldn't take a shower. So I mean, in the middle of the shower, it goes off. And so that's happened numerous times and okay. So it's, it's, I think it's about not breaking the law as far as the DEQ is involved. The DEQ, I believe, has a minimum requirement of 25 PSI. And that's rarely, rarely at my parents' house. Now, I say my parents, they're one of the higher elevations. That's why. But many people are, are affected by this. And if you want to grow the town, I feel like we're losing to Morrison and Perkins and Perry sometimes, and we shouldn't lose. We've got a huge town compared to them. But if you had somebody that works at Toro, for instance, or Ditchwich, they would live north of Stillwater. They're not going to live south of Stillwater. But we can't develop the area. It's, it's just locked. So, you know, there's other things that are very important and you're probably more aware of them than I am. But certainly this is not, shouldn't be bottom. And I can't develop and other people can't develop. Obviously, I'm redundant here without water meter, without the available water meters. And so, let's see. I had some other things. Well, yeah, it's the law. I think I'm about done. I'm just all over the place. But it's an investment. I mean, if you have an investment, you want a return on the investment. And I've heard many people say it's too risky, we don't want to do that. But developers can't come. It's not a risk. They can't put it in themselves. So if you want to develop rural, which bleeds into Stillwater, I mean, you know, if they're living here, we can develop houses, they'll have houses to buy, then come in and, and buy goods and services. I mean, surely you all understand better than I do how that works. So I guess I'm at the end. Thank you for letting me speak.
Appreciate your comments. Thanks for being here. Bill Furman?
I haven't had freedom of speaking like this in about 20 years. I'm going to give you a little boring history here. I'm going to go fast because I got a little more than he does. Thank you for letting us be here. I'm representing Albert Furman Trust, Furman Rental Properties, and I'm a new member on the advisory board, but I don't want to talk to you about advisory board, I want to talk to you about as a, as a member in good standing with our rural water. My family's been here in Payne County for 118 years. We've been on the same property for 118 years. My grandfather homestead here in 1905. Of course, the property's been dispersed, there's been many developments. We're looking for more development. We have an issue with the water situation. Without water, you can't develop. We all know that. In 1970, my grandfather became the 26th member of the Rural Water Board, was there until 1977 where my family purchased another 10 meters. To this date, we've been on the water board, a member of the water, Rural Water for 53 years. In this 53 years, we spent approximately $174,800 buying water from the city of Stillwater. And we appreciate it because there's no whales on our property, I promise you. This is a blessing to us and, and it's still a blessing to us, but it's become a foreign in our side. There's projects next to me, 160 acres that's been bulldozed. The Atkinson's, who is a family that's been here 80 to 100 years, the two sons are wanting to develop their property. Unbeknown to them, I helped them build the roads and I visited with about the water issue. We've got Mr. Cook on the other section up there. He lost a land sale because he couldn't get water, a lucrative land sale. We've got Mrs. Davenport, one of my really nice neighbors next door. Thank you, city. She finally got her first water meter that she ordered in 2020. It only took four years. And she is ecstatic, believe me. She really is. And she wanted me to tell you, thank you. She's needing another water meter on Country Club, still on our old homestead. This is the problem we're having out there. It's just, it's, it's, we can't, we can't go forward. Our, our family's wanting to build some duplexes. I am not here for my family. My neighbors are coming to me left and right. Water, we've got to have water. Again, you were heard about the leaks. There were seven leaks from my property to the YOSS station in the summer. It took me two months to get somebody out there to work on them. When the guys showed up, they were excellent. They were excellent. The guys come in, they did a good job. The reason I'm here is I want to draw attention to these two reports that Stephen and Robert have done. Folks, these are not opinions. This is the hard facts in these reports. These guys have taken a lot of time. Your people turned them, took the gracious time to go with them, show them what was good, what was bad. So I'm asking you, please get on our team. Please take some time with this report. Folks, we need your help. We really do. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations on getting the money from the feds. Let's get some more.
There's nothing wrong with the water system that a little money can't fix, right?
A lot of money.
Appreciate you being here. We appreciate the reports and, and look forward to hearing more from staff in future meetings about what we can do to, to bring some of that about. So thank you for being here. All right. Item 5B is consider a bid award for the recovered water pump station and finished water pump station project to crossland heavy construction, excuse me, crossland heavy equipment in the amount of $25,627,000 and approve associated budget amendments appropriating $20,351,768 for the project. Mr. Gimes?
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. My name is Chris Gimes. I'm with the City of Stillwater's Engineering Department. And I'm here tonight to present the construction bids for the recovered water and finished water pump stations, construction project. So the two pictures you see here are the, the existing recovered water pump station and the finished water pump station, which is on the right. These were constructed and placed in service in 1985. These facilities have safely moved over 90 billion gallons of water in the past 38 years, but as you can see, they're looking a little tired. Because of their age, they require frequent maintenance and parts have become difficult to obtain. In addition, these pumps cannot meet the projected future demands for the city of Stillwater and the surrounding areas. This project consists of building a new recovered water and finished water pump station designed to move 24 million gallons per day and expandable to 30 million gallons per day. This will also include the long-term solution for the northeast zone by building a permanent facility to take the place of the YOSS pump station. Current plan is to kick this project off in Q1 of 2024 and then place it in service by Q1 of 2026. So ultimately, this project will be funded with an ARPA grant and an existing loan from the Oklahoma Water Resource Board for Water 2040 and then a new loan that was just approved by the OWRB on November 30th of 2023. The total expenditures of $28,618,460 break down as follows. $25,627,000 for the construction bid, an additional 2.562,700 million for 10% contingency, and then $393,760 for third-party inspection services, and then an additional $35,000 for inspection services and testing. The loan approved by the OWRB on November 30th, 2023 is scheduled to close later this month. Until that loan is closed, a portion of the project will be funded by the water fund. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Trustees, questions? I think it's, well, as I said a second ago, there's nothing wrong with our water system that a little money won't fix. But as we can see, you know, 25, $26 million to replace pumps, there's a lot of projects that cost a lot of money that, that we're working on here. This will address at, at some level, some of the, the issues that were brought up by our friends in the Rural Water District, correct?
Absolutely. So actually next, in Q1 of 2024, we're rebuilding the YOSS pump station. We're going to spend $100,000 there to replace the pumps and put in a VFD system there. That'll get us until this project is done a couple of years later. So that's a two to three year solution. And then when we build this nice new finished water pump station, it'll have three pumps dedicated just to the YOSS zone. And so that's the long-term solution.
Thank you.
So I think the other thing that makes it challenging is you're doing all this work while you're trying to provide water to the city of Stillwater and the area while you're, while you're also doing this major construction project.
Further questions, trustees?
You mentioned that you could extend the capacity from 26 to 30 million on this project?
Yes.
What, what will that extension, expansion take?
So in the exist, so the project will have these, these are vertical can pumps. So there are multi-stage pumps that have stages stacked on top of each other. So the cans, and so a lot of the piping and the can pumps will be for the 30 million, but the pumps themselves would have to be upgraded to get to 30. So it's just looking ahead at the things that would make it easier to, to step up from the 24 up to the, to the 30.
What's your recommendation for us, Chris?
Staff recommends a motion to award a unit price contract to Crossland Heavy Contractors Incorporated for the base bid of $25,627,000 and authorize the general manager to sign related documents. Authorize total construction expenditures of $28,618,460 for construction, inspection, testing, and contingency. And approve a budget amendment appropriating $20,351,768 for the project.
Thanks, sir. Trustees?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation, please vote. Items approved with a vote of five to zero. All right. That takes us to item six on the agenda, which is something also related to water. This is Resolution SUA 2023-9, a resolution authorizing a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the principal amount of $37 million, authorizing the issuance of a Series 2023 Drinking Water SRF promissory note in the principal amount of said loan, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement for Drinking Water SRF loan and security agreement pertaining to said promissory note, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract and a sales tax agreement with the city of Stillwater, approving and authorizing payment of fees and expenses, approving various covenants, and authorizing execution of other documents pertaining to said loan and containing other provisions relating thereto. The, this is the authorization related to the ORW, OWRB water loan. Further comments from, no, city attorney? Nobody?
If you have any specific questions about the loan, our bond counsel, Don Kaiser, is here and he'd be happy to answer those.
For those who aren't very well-versed in drinking water loans, this is a state program that allows for evolving fund for us to be able to secure this money at a reasonable rate and, and go out and do these projects. So it's, it's good that the state has this, this money available for these kinds of loans. Questions about the resolution, trustees, or action on the item?
Motion to adopt Resolution SUA 2023-9.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is approved. We have nothing further on the SUA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
With a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority, please With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. All right. We are going to move back over to the city council meeting at this point. At this point, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council. We're at item three on the agenda. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Please pull item B.
Remove item B from the consent docket. Anything further?
Motion to accept consent docket, excluding item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept, to approve the consent docket minus item B. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved. Counselor Harden?
Yes, I want.
Yes, I want item B pulled because I had the, the pleasure of attending the audit committee meeting the other day. And we got a clean audit on the entire system. And it's a new auditor. He thanked very much the finance department, how well they had done on this. And I just want to let you know that I've, I felt really good about the way that all worked out, that we're spending our money as we say we're spending our money. And very good job, Kristi and Jared. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Appreciate you highlighting that. That's the Audit Committee, which is a committee of folks from around the community as well that serve to review those audits and ensure that that process is being followed. So we appreciate their service as well.
And I'll add that it's, it's, it's good to bring in a fresh set of eyes once in a while. And as Counselor Harden said, this was the first year with a new audit firm. And they were very complimentary of the staff and how, how, how things work between the firm and the staff. And it was just a really positive meeting.
Excellent. Counselor Harden, any action on the item?
Move to approve consent docket, item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, item B from the consent docket is approved. All right. That moves us to public hearings. Item 6A is a public hearing to consider appeals received to decision of the Planning Commission approving the issuance of a residential short-term rental license for property addresses 311 South Eiler Lane. This is CC-23-177. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Porter?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Jaclyn Porter, the city planner, and I will be presenting this item on behalf of the planning department. The city clerk's office received three letters of appeal to Planning Commission's approval to issue a short-term rental license at the property address as 311 South Eiler Lane. Section 23, 115.4 of City Code establishes that the short-term rental license appeals shall be made to the city council. The subject property is located in the Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, Zone Small Lot Single Family Residential, which is our RSS zoning. The property is located near the intersection of West Third Avenue and South Eiler Lane. Here's an aerial view and street view of the subject property. The street view is looking east off of South Eiler Lane towards the subject property. Westwood Elementary is located to the southeast of the subject property on the east side of South Willis Street. The city clerk's office received six letters of objection during the 30-day application objection period, sending this application to have a public hearing with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission approved the issuance of the short-term rentals with the condition that the rental complies with the Westwood Overlay requirements with a vote of five to zero. After issuance, the, the city clerk's office received three appeals of the short-term rental license of the Planning Commission that was approved and leading to this item being presented to you tonight. Here's some further information about the Westwood Overlay. There are currently 12 active short-term rental licenses in the Westwood Overlay. This includes a license that is being presented to you tonight. Some of these licenses have been operating since 2019. The property owner is here tonight to discuss any further questions on the operation of the license and the subject property. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Counselors, any questions for staff?
Have all of those short-term rental agreements been issued after the creation of the overlay district?
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, because I believe.
Because your district is far, is, is older than 2019, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Because, yeah, Westwood was, yeah, 11. Westwood Overlay was established in 11.
Yeah, the overlay existed before we even had short-term rental licenses.
Right, that's what I thought.
Further questions for staff? All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing. We do have the property applicant, the owner, here to speak. Catherine Morris. I would remind you that in public hearing, everyone who signed up to speak, we have five minutes. I have six or seven folks signed up, so if you want to take less than five minutes, that'd be great. But we're happy to listen to whatever you have within five minutes.
Hello, my name's Catherine Morris, and I'm the property owner at 311 South Eiler Lane. And I bought the property two and a half years ago for my children to live in while they're here at OSU. And, and we did not foresee that there would be a year where we didn't have children that needed to live there. But here we are with a year where I need to figure out how to keep it so that I can have them to move in in August when they're old enough to move in. So one of the ways that I'm doing that is by, is so that I can afford to keep the home that I absolutely love. It's the coolest house, if you ever get to go there, is to have it as a short-term rental. So I have some of the same exact fears of this being a short, my home being a short-term rental as my neighbors do. And for that reason, I've put in a lot of measures into place to make sure that my guests respect the property and the neighborhood. Some of those are two-night minimum. There's no automatic booking, so I can screen all of my guests. They're notified of the rules, and I gave you a handout that, that shows the listing. All of the rules are listed there, as well as when, before, when we have communication before they, before I allow them to book, they, they read them, they affirm that they've seen them, and they agree to that, as well as a reminder before they move, before they move in for the weekend or however long they're staying, and as well as a reminder once they're inside the property. So there's a rule for no parties or events. I explained the parking, since the Westwood Overlay part of that is the parking, that so they can only park in the driveway or in the garage. I feel, I know that my particular property is better kept as a short-term rental than it is when my own children are staying in it. It looks nicer. There's far less traffic. So since I was granted the short-term rental license, I've invested quite a bit. I've already invested a lot of money in the home, but I invested a lot more so that guests could come and stay. My, all of the neighbors that are, that are immediately around me, except for behind me, I haven't met that neighbor, but all the, all of them I've met. They've met my family because we've spent a lot of time working on the home. They all have my contact information and I have theirs. So if there's ever a concern, and I, I do live in Texas in McKinney, but, but I can drop everything and come, just like I did today, if I need to. And so, plus I have a, a good friend that lives in town that can be here, be there in this, about five minutes. And as was presented, there's other short-term rentals in the Westwood Overlay. There have been no complaints that I have been made aware of, and I have been speaking with some of the other owners in our neighborhood, and they all have fabulous places to stay that offer different things for the people that want to, to come to Stillwater. And, and I do believe in my research that the overlay was intended for the long-term rentals, and I understand the purpose of that for our neighborhood. But I do think it was meant for long-term rentals because I would be in violation of it if I lived there and I had my best friend's family come stay. I would be in violation of it the first, I, if, if it's intended for one night, I would be in violation immediately. So I, I, I appreciate your time tonight, and I ask that you affirm the decision of the Planning Commission and uphold my license. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. I have several other folks who have signed up to speak in the public hearing. I'm going to start with Katie Omens.
Good evening. My name is Katie Omens, and I live at 323 Eiler Lane, which is directly to the south of the property in question. My husband, Tom, and I moved with our then-two-year-old son to Stillwater in 2007. It didn't take long to realize that the Westwood Neighborhood was where we wanted to settle. Its walkability, easy access to campus, where my husband works, and a top-notch elementary school made this area stand out. About a day after we moved into our home, Sally Arberg, our neighbor who lived in the house in question at this hearing, came over with a pie, a smile, and a warm welcome. We quickly came to know her and her husband, Bob. They helped us as newcomers to Oklahoma, and as time passed and they aged and needed help, we looked out for them. Tom and I have built other such relationships with our neighbors. This is what makes our street and neighborhood a little jewel. It is a residential and family-focused place. We take comfort in knowing who lives around us, engaging with one another in the street and providing help when needed. We know to be careful at the end of the block because young children play there. It is also this constant act of running into one another that can help when issues and/or differences arise, as it works to everyone's benefit to keep things neighborly. We feel invested in where we live. The Westwood Neighborhood Association has worked hard to keep this area a true neighborhood. While our proximity to campus may make this an attractive area to operate a short-term rental property, what are the costs to the people who choose to own and live there? Short-term tenants have little incentive to be neighborly. Why feel invested in the people and the place when you are only here for a short time? Thus, with the conversion of more and more homes into short-term rentals, what will happen to the character and attractiveness of our neighborhood? We live on a small street that will surely be impacted by the presence of an Airbnb. Maybe some of you would have similar concerns if this happened on your street in your neighborhood. Today, if I were looking to buy and knew the neighbor's house to be a short-term rental, I would not submit an offer. We want to live in a residential neighborhood, not next door to a business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm, I'm one of the newest residents in the neighborhood. I moved here in June. I bought last October, and I've been renovating a 1954 house. It's absolutely beautiful. And I'd like to share some concerns I have with you today. As a young professional who, I chose to settle in this neighborhood because it really stood out to me. This neighborhood near Westwood, for a particular reason. I was drawn to living in a well-established neighborhood where people were living in their forever house. I thought that was really great. People raised their kids here. People grow old together in this neighborhood. It's a beautiful place. I found a calm and quiet neighborhood away from the disruptions of late-night parties and crowded driveways. As a new neighbor, this is why I'm concerned about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals means a loss of real neighbors. That was one of the big values in this neighborhood, is the people that are around you and people constantly walking the neighborhood, checking on your home, you checking on theirs, and really just the value of being able to know your neighbors. I really appreciated that. Secondly, short-term rentals often come with the possibility of frequent disruption. So we think of these as parties, larger get-togethers. And then, thirdly, is the consideration of parking and congestion in the neighborhoods. These are old neighborhoods built in the 50s. They're not really designed to have eight people staying the night. And I did not realize as a new homeowner that there were around 12 or a dozen of these short-term rentals in the neighborhood. I could have maybe reconsidered if, if I had known that. And I hope that we don't get more in the neighborhood in the future, because that would make, you may possibly regret my decision of, of joining this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Gary Clark. My wife and I, Jane, live at 320 Eiler Lane, which is just across the street. In fact, I assume that the picture taken there was probably taken from our front yard. Generally, short-term rentals affect adversely affordable housing in a community. The research shows that as the number of short-term rentals increase in a community, the quantity of affordable housing units decreases. The Harvard Business Review says that, quote, "Because of Airbnb, absentee landlords are moving their properties out of the long-term rental and for-sale markets and into the short-term rental market." An article in the New York Times today, and I'll pass this around for you to read, but, quote, "Around the United States, in small cities reliant on college sports to keep their economies humming, short-term rentals are destabilizing housing markets fueled by wealthy fans and investors who transform their single-family homes into de facto hotels for a few weeks out of the year and often leave them sitting empty." Turning more specifically to our neighborhood, within a block of our house, we have two long abandoned homes and another house that had been recently purchased and renovated by young couples as their residences. We see their children. We see them playing in their yards. We see them riding their bikes in our streets safely. We see neighbors like Katie and Tom and Larry and Hillary who keep an eye out on our home when we travel. Please don't allow an Airbnb to start an infection that will overcome our hard-earned neighborhood. You'll see us wearing green t-shirts tonight. This is what we wore when we got the Westwood Neighborhood Association. Those of us who were involved then are wearing these. We brought them out of the, out of the closet for this special occasion. Frankly, the Planning Commission failed to follow the provisions of the ordinance by considering the impact on our neighborhood. As one commissioner put it, "Well, the applicant has answered all the questions we normally ask." Unfortunately, there was no mention of the impact on the neighborhood by the commission. As you well know, the city council may approve, approve with conditions, or deny the license. Section 23, 180F specifically provides, "The effect of the proposed specific use upon the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, public utilities, drainage, and other matters related to the general welfare may also be considered." As you've heard and will hear tonight, the proposed license would have a significant adverse impact on the character of our neighborhood and our general welfare. We respectfully but urgently request that you deny the license. There's a simple question before the council tonight. Do you license a business run by an absentee owner in the heart of the Westwood Neighborhood? Or do you support the neighbors who live here, work here, pay taxes here, support the city, support charities, and school bond issues, and city's tax issues? Because we appreciate the importance of a strong city and a strong neighborhood. And that's why we chose to live in the Westwood Neighborhood, and we ask you to support us tonight. And I would ask those in the room who may not speak, because we were cognizant of, of your time, and we try to keep our remarks to three, three minutes. Those in the room who oppose this license, would you please stand? And if you're already standing, you can wave your hand. So, operating in our neighborhood, and I thank you. And I'll pass this, is it proper to pass this along?
You're, you can, yes. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, I have Marshall Baker.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. First, I just want to say thanks. I've got my wife, Robin, and my boys, great crew. I want them to see how the, the city makes decisions for us. When we moved back to Stillwater, we made a decision that we wanted to be a part of something in building the town and growing the town. So we found, we asked, you know, where could we invest on, in the Westwood Overlay? We wanted to be a part of renovating this historic neighborhood. And so many neighborhoods, so many communities have historic neighborhoods that are preserved and protected. And the Westwood Overlay in Stillwater is that historic neighborhood. To hear the families talk about all the families of the past and the leaders of Stillwater in these historic homes, we wanted to be a part of that restoration. Lucky for us, we found, I think, the house that Gary was talking about that was left abandoned. We didn't know if it was, we could recover the home. But I think it's an interesting story. The house that we bought was owned by Alan Bright out of Houston, Texas. He loved the home. He cared about the neighbors. He wanted to come regularly and check on the home. The home was, was gifted to him. It was important to him. He rented it with the best integrity he could. But when we purchased the home, he called and asked me at one point to go turn on the heat because of the pipes. And I, I had to share with Alan, there is no electricity at the house, Alan. electricity at the house, Alan. When we bought the home, we had to remove two people that were experiencing homelessness, and were living in our home. This is what happens when you have out-of-town people that have good intentions but yet are not Stillwater residents. And I think when we look at the Airbnb, this is not something that was here when the overlay was crafted. So I would say we really need to think long and hard. And you may say, well, we have an Airbnb in our neighborhood perhaps. But I think the Westwood overlay has to be specifically protected. We're right near campus. There is a huge risk. You can see it during games. People drive by our homes. They look at our homes. They stop and ask if there's any homes for sale. If you've been around our home during any of these events, people are constantly in our neighborhood looking for properties to purchase for this purpose. We enjoy living with college kids. We enjoy the multi-generational nature of Westwood. But the Airbnb brings in a different environment. My role with the overlay is I serve as the, I'm the lucky individual that gets to serve as the enforcement officer on our board. So my job is to help the city, connect with the city, try to report as regularly as I can violations that we suspect, hey, let's check on this house. Let's check with this house. Just a little background, the way enforcement works is through relationship, to be honest. We stop, we go talk to the neighbors. We talk to the college kiddos. We talk to the new residents. We get to know each other. We say, hey, I'm noticing there's four cars here all the time. Just a reminder of the overlay. Well, that's my girlfriend. Well, are they on the lease? We have these conversations. These are people that live there for a long period of time. With the Airbnb, recently, we started collecting information on the violations. And the challenge that we have is though the homeowner has all these rules in place, recently, we found that when I tried to report a violation, recently, I reported a violation on an Airbnb. It had seven cars parked in front of it. I took pictures of them. I sent it in. But from an enforcement standpoint, with a short-term rental, it's really difficult. And the city legally is asking, well, I don't know if these people are related to each other. I can't go visit with these people. I can't go check on the enforcement. There's no way to do that because they're gone so quickly. So we've reported multiple times continuing issues. And, you know, just to provide a counterargument to the property owner, there are lots of violations. But they're unenforceable, because this isn't the way the overlay was built. So the enforcement committee, we're not sure how to help ensure the integrity of the neighborhood with these Airbnbs, because it's difficult to enforce and to check in on the enforcement. So we really ask, as a family that's invested in this area, kids that ride our bikes, we don't know people that stay at that Airbnb. They drive fast down the roads. There's a lot of them. They don't know us. We'd really ask you to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood that we've invested in. Thanks.
Thank you. James Beckstrom?
Good evening. I'm James Beckstrom. I live at 2218 West Fourth Avenue in the Westwood neighborhood area. I, you know, I've been in commercial business for a long, long time. So, you know, when I think about investment, I mean, I can't tell you how many presentations I've given to committees, talking about net present value, return on investment, internal rate of return. But those were always financial metrics. We always had another set of metrics anytime we went into a project to make a big investment, particularly when they got bigger. But also, there was a sensitivity issue, is what's the effect on the community? You know, what's the investment impact on the community? What's this going to do to a neighborhood, for example? And we would shy away sometimes from investments that didn't seem to be a good fit for the community that we were in. Citizenship and community engagement are foundational to quality communities. When we are personally invested in our community, we are looking for a return on investment for both ourselves and for our money. We value our relationships and our community. Thus, we invest our time and ourselves there. That's the thing that we really need to be talking about, is a neighborhood is people. It's not properties. I've got a good friend who lives in the north part of the town here, and they live in a very average neighborhood. And none of the homes on this street would be Better Homes and Gardens homes. I'm not being insult. It's just that's not where their focus is. They've all got young kids, and you go down the street, and there are kids everywhere, and they are playing, and it is a vibrant neighborhood. Is it beautiful? Well, it's okay, but it's not gorgeous. It doesn't need to be. It's a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood. So it's not all about appearance. Yeah, we need to feed ourselves and our families, which requires management of our financial resources. So financial return is important. I get that. The massive donations of Block 34 Development and other significant community endeavors are clear evidence of our citizens, people that live here, investing towards other things other than black and white financial return. John Patton's purchase of the property at Sixth and Western, and then ultimately donating that to the city. The amazing sculpture, another act of giving with no financial return. The donation of the Washington School property to the city, another major donation, but there's no return. It's a community investment. It's about the community, investing in the community. Absentee landlords are not Stillwater citizens, and rarely do they volunteer their time to communities they are absent from. After all, by definition, they're absent. They're not in the community. They're not in the neighborhood. They're someplace else. When we lose a residential property to absentee owners and short-term rental, we lose three times. First, we have a property whose owners are generally not part of the community. They're someplace else. They're living their life someplace else. They're contributing to the daily bread wherever they are, someplace else. Their short-term clients are generally from out of town, so they're also not participating in the community. They're just showing up, passing through. And thirdly, in the case of Westwood, we've lost a house to what could be, have families in it. Could be children, could be long-term neighbors. Combined, and several folks have already said this, combined, that is a direct conflict of what the Westwood Neighborhood Overlay Conservation District was supposed to do. It's just heartbreaking, honestly. Yes, there are examples of absentee landlords who have invested to physically improve their properties. We have some beautiful-looking properties that belong to third-party landowners. But that doesn't make a neighborhood. It might make for a nice listed house, but it doesn't make for a neighborhood. And the reality is, is that income's getting spent someplace else. So here, you've got all this cash flow, and it's going someplace else. It's not coming here. There's actually a project going on on my street, and all the workers are from out of state. So not only is it owned by somebody else, but the work's being done by somebody else. So I ask you, please, stop this disease that's getting into the Westwood neighborhood and our neighborhoods in general, and help us bring it into this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bob Grauman. As Bob's coming up, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this matter. If you were planning to speak, if you thought you were signed up to speak, please come over and see Patty.
Thank you. Good to see everyone. I'm Bob Grauman, and Diane and I, she's back in the back, have lived happily at 2224 Sunset Drive since 1981. Do you need a minute to process that math? We are co-presidents of the WNA, and here is an overview of our organization as it relates to the present appeal. Some 15 years ago, before the WNA, the area west of OSU to Hall of Fame, Admiral to Sixth, was falling into disrepair, and the quality of life around Westwood School less attractive. I remember deciding not to take nightly walks anymore. Too dangerous. Eventually, on the Stillwater School Board, I heard and participated in serious discussions about whether Westwood Elementary should even remain on Sixth Street as it is now, or move farther west or north. I think all are now grateful for the new building and its lovely surroundings. Thanks to a city council tool, the Conservation Overlay District, approved by a 5-0 vote, I might say, things are better. We've even heard suggestions that such measures might benefit other parts of Stillwater as well. Of course, that was long before anyone had ever heard of short-term rentals, all of which are changing things dramatically for everyone, hence tonight's discussion. It is interesting that some cities, as you've heard already tonight, are restricting or denying such businesses, noting that they compromise local economies, overburden enforcement measures, and alter the normal cycles of young buyers trying to enter markets unable to compete. We don't challenge these businesses in concept. We do, however, prize our accomplishments and expect that those who promote their properties should not be allowed to violate neighborhood regulations. We have always understood how game weekends or graduations might exceed the usual limits and are patient with that. But we do know that there are occasions when homes are turned into party houses or gatherings, large gatherings consistently violating what the city unanimously approved, and the results of which are obvious. If you care to see that difference in microcosm, just drive down Admiral from Hall of Fame toward OSU, and notice the first few homes, which are part of the Westwood Neighborhood Association, and then the less appealing ones going to ruin between that area and OSU. The latter part is what you'd have without the WNA. Last summer, I walked our entire district to promote a social function. At one home near Arrowhead Park, I handed our flyer to a young woman, packing her car for summer break, and asked her how she liked the area. She said it was a wonderful four-bedroom home owned by a longtime elderly resident. She said that woman could have made a lot more money by renting the fourth bedroom, but didn't convince the WNA rules were, quote, "Good for Stillwater instead," and she didn't want to violate the code. I submit that such folks as that who devote their lives to community principles are important here, and that distant owners who might not have the same intentions should not expect to be absent most of the time and then violate city statutes for a quick profit. I was just handed a quick document that I think I have time to read that actually is a good way to conclude. I believe this is the last talk. This was the original purpose that was passed by the city council for the Westwood Neighborhood Association. The purpose of the WNA Conservation Overlay District is to facilitate preservations of an existing, single-family residential neighborhood by establishing limitations and special requirements on property uses within said area that are inconsistent with the underlying zoning and original construction thereof, by providing a mechanism for making such inconsistent uses compatible when practicable, and further providing for the amortization and elimination of such inconsistent uses when not practicable. I didn't write that last part. There's an English major up here who said, that's a run-on, right? I believe that's it. Thank you very much. It's nice to see you all.
We do have one other person sign up to speak, and that's Mark Lambert.
Good evening. Mark Lambert. My wife, Julie, and I, we resided at 1824 West University. A lot of very, very important things have been said this evening, and it just wasn't that long ago when many of the people that are in this room began the initiative to create the Westwood Overlay District. And there was, quite honestly, a broad support, not just throughout our neighborhood, but many, many Stillwater residents. Burns Hargis stood at this very podium in valiant support of the Westwood Overlay District. One thing that hadn't been mentioned this evening is, the Westwood neighborhood is the very, very last neighborhood in Stillwater, Oklahoma, that touches Oklahoma State University. As Burns Hargis said that evening, and what we've known for many, many years, and a lot of people in the community know, is the Westwood neighborhood is actually a pretty critical recruiting tool for Oklahoma State University, because there are a lot of professors, a lot of employees, that are looking to Stillwater, looking Oklahoma State University, and their ability to be as close to the university as what Westwood neighborhood is, is very critical to their decision. I would venture to say that of the many out-of-state absentee property owners, homeowners, if this very proposition was in front of them, and somebody was proposing an Airbnb and advertised it for eight to 10 occupants, parking for eight to 10 cars, and if that residence was next to their home, or in their neighborhood in Texas, or Arkansas, or Kansas, or whatever out-of-state they're from, they would be attending their own city council meeting in opposition to what they are proposing here in Stillwater, Oklahoma. This is yet one more home. You know, every day, thousands of people communicate, commute to Stillwater from either Oklahoma City or Tulsa. And a big reason that they do that, because they can't find a home to buy in Stillwater, and so they choose to commute. It's one more couple, one more family. As a resident of Stillwater, that's one less couple or individual that can serve on our boards, that can participate in the many, many initiatives that our community tries to do, but they can't if they don't live in Stillwater. We appreciate you guys declining this request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't think I have anyone else to speak here at the public hearing. At this point, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask that Jaclyn comes back up and gives us a reminder of prior procedure on this item.
Oh, too far. Reminder? You want to, the recommendation?
There you go.
Okay. Based on the underlying records and the approval by the Planning Commission by unanimous vote of five to zero, city staff recommends uphold the decision of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jaclyn. All right. Who wants to start?
I'll start. Am I on? I'm on. I have a number of friends who spoke this evening, and chances are pretty good that they're not going to be happy with anything I have to say. The mayor, we recall, several, maybe a year ago, had the opportunity to vote in favor of an unpopular STR in your own neighborhood, and you did so. One of the things I tried to listen to for tonight was, what would differentiate this application from the other 11 that it went through apparently unopposed? And I didn't see anything. The other thing that concerns me a little bit is, this application complies with our ordinance, and if we deny it, I would expect that the homeowner is going to sue us and probably win, because I can't see any reason that we can justify not allowing it to go forward. And that's not that, you know, I in any way want to see the Neighborhood Association or the neighborhood damaged. You know, I was on the school board with Dr. Grauman when we decided to put that school there, right next to where it was before. And frankly, I was one of the voices that said, we need to look at moving it out west, because our population has shifted out west. We just couldn't find the property out there that made sense for us to build a school. So we came back to Westwood and bought a bunch of houses, tore them down, and built a new school. The homeowner has done everything that was asked of her. She does list the language from our ordinance that talks about the unrelated people. She has put cameras in place to monitor what's going on. She has someone who can be there within minutes if someone needs to be there. She's tried to build a relationship with the neighbors so that they can have conversations with her, and given her a phone number. If there's a problem, they can call and get it addressed. I don't see how we can reject the application.
Thank you, councilor. Counselors, other comments, questions?
I think the comment that I would make, and I agree with Councilor Clark, but I also would say that, you know, we do have mechan- would say that, you know, we do have mechanisms in place that a license like this can be revoked if it is, if the tenants are in violation of the Westwood Overlay guidelines and covenant. And so I do think there is that mechanism that could be put into play if the tenants do, are violating the covenant, so are violating the, oh, how many people can be there, how many, the parking, things like that. And so I do think that is at least something to fall back on because I do agree that legally this isn't something that we can necessarily not approve.
So I've got a question for Attorney Carnley about enforcement. Whether it's enforcement of this particular property or enforcement of STRs around the city, what role does the city play when there's a complaint? Could you walk us through that?
Sure. So for code enforcement violations, whether those are complaint-driven or more of an active enforcement, which they typically refer to as neighborhood surveys, so when they're doing drive-bys to check on yard, parking, trash, or littering, all leads are investigated. They're tracked in a electronic system, and they're followed up on for compliance. If during the investigation there is sufficient findings that there's a violation, then the code enforcement officer issues either written warnings or citations, whichever is warranted. The goal really is compliance. So for instance, one example might be a trash cart violation where a trash can is left at the curb, you know, past the collection day. In that instance, a code enforcement officer might, you know, leave written warnings, but if there's repeated offenses, then it would rise to the level of a citation, which results in a fine and/or prosecution in municipal court. The tracking and record-keeping aspect of code enforcement is important because that creates a record for, as Counselor Hawkins was saying, there is a suspension or a revocation process for short-term rentals. So if we do receive a complaint, if there is either failure to comply with visitor tax and any other violation of city code, so whether that be a violation, if the subject property is located in the Westwood Overlay, that would be a violation of any of those code provisions or any other provision of city code, then there can be a revocation or suspension hearing held before the planning commission. Those hearings are also subject to appeal to the city council. Have I answered your question?
Thank you. Yes.
While your microphone is on, can you think of a defensible cause for not approving this?
The code specifically sets forth that the acceptable action by council is to approve, approve with conditions, or to deny. In this case, if you were to revoke the license, you will need to state the reasons in the record that would support that. You can, in making that determination, consider all of the things that are set forth under the Council Action Section, which does include the effect of the use upon the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, public utilities, drainage, other matters related to the general health, safety, and welfare. So if council did wish to take action to revoke the license, I would ask that you articulate those specific reasons so that the underlying record is more defensible. I did ask the city planning staff to, which she has here, I did ask her to please determine if we had received complaints or violations for this subject property. I believe there have been no complaints or violations of any code provision or the Westwood Overlay to city staff's knowledge, and I provide that for your information.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sympathetic to all the neighbors that are here working to protect the place that is their community and their neighborhoods and their homes. I recognize this isn't necessarily part of the action that we're taking tonight, but I'm wondering, I think we talked about this mayor actually in the case that was in your neighborhood last year, what opportunities the neighborhood would have to address this issue more comprehensively and holistically for the community that they live in. I'm looking at you.
You're asking me?
Yes.
So if I understand your question, well, for instance, the city doesn't have the authority to enforce HOA covenants or other restrictive covenants of that type. Certainly, that would be a tool in the neighborhood's toolbox. Then they could have a civil right of action against an owner that violated those covenants. But again, just hearing the, some of the comments about code enforcement this evening, I mean, those types of code enforcement violations that are referred to city staff are investigated and documented, and if there is a code violation, there can be a revocation or suspension hearing called for that purpose.
So from a kind of a short-term perspective, it would be from that code enforcement perspective, from a long-term, more comprehensive solution if that was something that they were looking at for the Westwood Neighborhood District or Overlay, that HOA kind of component of preventing or disallowing that kind of use would be the appropriate function?
Yes, and it's probably important to note because it hasn't been mentioned yet, but this particular license was issued with the condition that the property owner follow all of the Westwood Overlay restrictions, and that really is kind of a belt-and-suspenders approach because the short-term rental license code provision does specifically in Section 23115.6 contemplate that a license may be issued to a subject property that had other overlay restrictions or deed restrictions, and it specifically says that all of those are to be followed in addition with the license.
Was that restriction placed on the other 11 properties that have STRs?
One moment. I have my planning commission attorney. Do you recall if, I don't believe that they've been approved with...
I agree with your question. However, the ordinance already commented.
So to answer your question, to our knowledge, no. However, the code provision for residential short-term license would require any owner issued a license to follow applicable overlay restrictions.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And I would agree. I think any of us that own a home agree and understand exactly what you all are asking and what you want from your neighborhood. And so I would say, for me on a personal note, I would be quick to call for revoking a license if there's an issue. But again, what we can do legally is a little different right now because nothing, they've not had any complaints of the property.
I'm going to make some comments. I really, these are, can probably think of maybe one or two other times on city council in almost six years here where we have decisions like this that are what feel like very, very difficult ones to make, given the balancing of the issues that we have to do. Other than Mr. Stevenson, I personally know every single person who came up here to speak about this issue from the neighborhood. I respect all of them greatly and respect the contributions that they make to our community, and I absolutely agree that the Westwood Neighborhood Overlay is an absolute necessity for this region, for this region of our community, that it's been successful, that it should continue to be enforced as strongly as possible, that it should be used in other parts of our community. I think that it addresses some real concerns that we had, and it has helped preserve this neighborhood in a positive way over the years. I agree that in this specific circumstance, there is, you know, the comments that we've heard are about the general effect of short-term rentals, which I, again, don't disagree with. I think that from a city perspective, reexamining how we approach short-term rentals as a whole is something we should do. And I think the article that was provided, I've certainly read similar material from other places. There is a lot of conversation happening about whether short-term rentals are a positive overall or a negative for communities like ours. The fact of the matter is, we have a short-term rental ordinance that allows for these to be issued. There is not a specific prohibition against that in this neighborhood, and there's not a specific problem or impact that can be identified for this property to not receive a permit. And so I don't feel like it would be a proper use of our authority to say no to someone who's followed all the rules that we gave them to follow based on what we think might be a negative impact or could be a negative impact in the future. I will echo all of the comments about anytime we can actually document a negative impact, then we will use the tools that we have within our ordinances to revoke the license. I think that's absolutely, you know, reasonable, and we should be ready and willing to do that. I do think we as a community, I feel strongly that there are several absentee, out-of-town owners of property in this community that contribute greatly to this community. I don't think we want to set up an us-versus-them mentality of folks who live outside the community. There are lots of folks who do live outside the community, who provide services here, that pay taxes here. Certainly, a property like this is paying visitor tax, and that's supporting for us things like building baseball fields and, you know, creating amenities for our community to use, and that is built on the backs of visitor tax that is paid by facilities like this one. So I don't, you know, I do want to caution us all from taking too much of the negative attitude of saying just because folks live outside their community that they're not contributing. But that being said, I absolutely, I mean, the folks that certainly are here, the folks who are active in the Westwood Neighborhood as a whole have been great contributors to our community and continue to be so. We need to find a way to address this issue at a higher level because, you know, as we've all said, I think at this point, in this specific instance, I don't think we have the standing to come in and say, "No, we're going to say to overrule, you know, the planning commission on this issue." I understand that that's not a popular position to take, and at least in this room. I will say that I think, I would certainly support, I think we as a council would support the idea of looking at our short-term rental ordinance from a big-picture standpoint. How does it interact with overlays? Is there sort of a number at which any resident, any residential neighborhood is saturated with these sorts of things? You know, like anything else, there are positives and there are negatives, and we need to address it as a big picture, as other folks have commented. My neighborhood had one of these come in just last year. There was a lot of outcry. There were a lot of folks who came to the meeting and told me that as a member of that neighborhood, I needed to support them as well. And in the same vein, I voted to uphold that one. I have not seen a single issue with the place. It's up kept fine. Our neighborhood has kids playing in it. You know, it's been, you know, I can't point to a specific negative instance. And so I think we need to try to address this at a higher level rather than at this specific issue. So with all that said, so, well, I will move that we sustain the decision of the planning commission in this specific license.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Please vote. The vote, five to zero, motion is sustained. I will add that anybody who wants to talk more about it, please feel free to reach out. We can talk about what our options are moving forward. Item 6B, public hearing regarding an application for a specific use permit to install a public safety telecommunications tower exceeding 75 feet at property address as 623 East 8th Avenue, CC-23-178. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Porter.
All right. I'll wait a little bit. Okay. All right. Thank you. The next item I'm presenting on behalf of the planning department is a specific use permit to allow the height of a telecommunications tower to exceed 75 feet located at the property address as 623 East 8th Avenue. This item is in relation to the item H on the consent docket of tonight, and it's C23171. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is located near the intersection of South Perkins Road and East 8th Avenue on the south side of 8th Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Subject property is the location where the city of Stillwater Public Works Maintenance Barns are located. To the west of the property is the collection center and LTAP. Here's a street view looking south of East 8th Avenue towards the subject property. Here's a zoning map of the area. The subject property is zoned public with similar zonings to the east and south. Commercial General and Small Lot Single Family Residential is located to the west, and Light Industrial is located to the north of the property. On May 2nd of 2023, Planning Commission approved a specific use permit to allow for a telecommunications tower for emergency responses at the property located at 4220 North Perkins Road. City council approved this request as well on June 5th of 2023. Unfortunately, city's emergency management team and contractors with Intertek had to abandon the North Perkins proposal, proposed location. After further research, design changes, and appropriate documents approved, the city emergency management team and contractor were able to identify the subject property as the proposed new location of the emergency response tower. The proposal is for a 419-foot tower to be located in the southeast corner of the subject property. The tower is designed to withstand 116 mile-per-hour wind and 40 mile-per-hour basic wind with one and a half inch of ice. The tower will also have a theoretical zero-fall radius. Rob Hill, the director of Emergency Management and members of Intertek are here tonight to address any of your questions. Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you, Jaclyn. Any questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item. Was anybody here to speak on the item? All right. I will close the public hearing. Jaclyn, is there a recommendation?
Yes, there is. Yes, Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. I will just say that the previously approved site was particularly unpopular with folks in the area, so I'm glad that we were able to find something that situated in a less controversial area of town. So appreciate Rob and your staff for working to figure out a better alternative. Counselors.
I move to approve the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the planning commission recommendation. Please vote. The vote, five to zero, that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under general orders, item A, approve and award a Fire Station 2 work package number one bids for demolition, earthwork, site concrete, site utilities, and storm sewer to cross on construction for a total of 1.297 million with some change, and Candy Starling is here to tell us more about it.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Candy Starling with the Engineering Department. I'm also representing other departments here tonight who are working on Fire Station Number Two. That's the Fire Department, Finance, City Management, IT. You're all involved in this very exciting project. Little background, on April 5th, 2022, the voting residents of Stillwater approved the $9 million bond for Fire Station Number Two. It was a time initiative, together investing in municipal excellence. The location of the fire station is going to be about a half a mile north of McElroy on Western Road on the east side. We have a budget of nine million of the bond. The budget's been very tight, and the team is working cooperatively to try to find ways to reduce cost. It's been a challenge. The bond language had very specific requirements for the fire station, the square foot, the number of bays, some other things, and we are held at nine million, so we're working very hard to get that to be reduced. The original estimate for the fire station itself was 7.5, and our estimate is closer to eight right now, so that's how tight we are. We, because of the schedule, we decided to do an early work package called Work Package Number One, and we bid six different trades. The two that are not shown here are fencing and landscape, irrigation and plantings. So we, when we bid the six for Work Package Number One, we were over the budget for Work Package Number One by 152,000. So the team came together and decided to remove those two trades that I mentioned, landscape, irrigation, plantings, and fencing, and work a little while to find ways to reduce the cost for those in advance of including them in Work Package Two. And for the time being, we want to recommend approval of these four trades. This is a CMAR project. approval of these four trades. This is a C-MAR project I didn't mention, and our partner for the C-MAR is Crossland. You guys are going to hear a lot about Crossland because they have Block 34 and Fire Station Two and the Finnish Water Pump Station. So they might as well move into town if they're not already here.
Can you explain what a C-MAR is?
C-MAR is construction manager at risk. So the difference in that deliverable style is we procure, we contract with them at very early in design, and they follow us through design, giving us cost estimates that they assure us are very, very close to the real estimate so that we have more cost certainty. And then when we bid our work package, like one of the benefits of what we just did was we've removed two trades because they're over. So now we can go work on those a little longer to try to reduce them, and you don't have that advantage with design bid build where what we just did with Block 34 was have a bunch of alternates, and we're kind of playing coconut shells at the end to see what we can fit in, but we don't get to go back to the drawing board. We're at a place where we either award or we don't award. And so C-MAR gives us some flexibility on the way to the finish line. As part of the C-MAR agreement, there are markups after they do the direct cost, which right here, the direct cost is coming out to the $1,059,260.32. And then after that, the agreement adds certain markups for general conditions, bonding insurance, direct project support, construction contingency, and their fee. And when we add all those in, we get up to $1,297,063.13. So just before work package number one, this is a list of what we've already encumbered for the project, bond sales, the architecture-engineering agreement, surveying, and pre-construction services through Crossland. So that, we were already at $1,3095, and adding the nearly $1.3 million for work package one, we get to roughly $2.3 million. And our schedule is shown here. Groundbreaking is tomorrow, out on site. Contracts and bonds will happen just as soon as we get through with some exhibits that are executed by staff. Pre-work mobilization, December and January. Construction for work package one should be complete in March or so. And then we'll also do the advertisement and bidding for work package two, January, February. And we expect the entire project to be very close to completion in July 2025. Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, the markup and fee amount, that $237,000 or so, is that typical? And is that, I guess that seems like a pretty high markup to me. So can, you know, could you talk about how that compares to other construction manager entities?
I will tell you that I am learning this C-MAR. And what I believe is that had we design bid built it, then I think we would have seen, and let's say this was all there was in the project, I think we would have seen the total direct costs and the first two lines added in. And I think construction contingency would have been something we held, like we normally have a construction contingency that we're using. And then I think the C-MAR fee might be the extra for the C-MAR. That's my best answer. The problem that I, where I can't answer you with real certainty is because I'm never doing a design bid build and a C-MAR for the same project and landing at the same spot to say, apples to apples, this is what ends up happening. So a lot of this is, and I've questioned a lot of Crossland when I've gone through this to make sure, do I really understand what the risk is and what this would have been if it was design bid build? But I do know a coworker of mine, David Barth, and I'll sit in my office and debate with each other about how this is going and what we think. And there's benefits on both sides of both situations.
In this scenario, if they come back high, if the subcontractors here come back and say, well, it was actually more than this, whose risk is that? If we're paying them the contingency...
Yes, it's ours. It's the city's. So there is, we do have the contingency that we can lean on, and it's shown there. And there's a little bit more in this, in our overall $9 million project. But once we're out of contingency, and if these bid higher, the city has to go find the money to make it work.
So I'm wondering what the at-risk part is.
I...
Where's their risk?
We have asked ourselves that also.
Okay.
We are using an agreement that was loaned to us, and we worked on it very diligently to make sure it protected us and covered us. There are different kinds of C-MAR agreements. We seem to be using one, I think, that is a cooperative arrangement where we have the benefit of having a contractor on board with us all the way to benefit from that. But unless we have a hard bid at like 60 or 70%, they are, I don't think they're tied to that number until those bids come in. And once you do have that bid, you're definitely losing a lot of flexibility in how you can make changes. So on design-build projects where you have a contractor and a designer, and you bid very early, you're pretty much telling them this is the max we'll pay, and you guys make changes to make sure you can build this for this money. And one of the problems we've faced, we sat in a meeting two Thursdays ago, and we have the estimate, we have some Edmund, City of Edmund bids to compare, and it's not a positive thing because it looks like ours is going to go quite a bit over because of what we're seeing there for the square foot price, and we can't reduce our square foot and/or a number of bays or some of the things that we promised. So we're working on things like less irrigation, less landscaping, less fencing in the gate. Maybe we drop the pergola and some of the things that just make it, you know, the character, and we're trying to bid alternates to help us fit it in, the money we have.
Candy, I was under the impression that, that at some point, they're going to bring us a maximum guaranteed price, and that's where the at-risk part comes in. Is that fair or is that not fair?
This contract contemplates an interim guaranteed max price, and that's their estimate. And we, once the, at the very end, after we have all the bids, it converts the interim guaranteed max price to a lump sum. And there are contracts out there, I've heard, that have the maximum guaranteed price somewhere earlier, in a more of a bidding environment earlier. But that's not the agreement that we have, that we've been using. We are using this agreement on terminal, so we might look to make sure that we're getting what we want to get out of the C-MAR.
So, I mean, normally with a bid, if we award a bid right now for these projects, then that's the price, right, with the contingency? Is that not the case here?
Yes. When we have a design bid build approach, yes. So when we have a design bid build, we, it's, this is not a design bid build, but if we were to, say, for example, if we were to contemplate, or if we were to decide, we're not going to do these four trades, we're going to convert this entire thing to a design bid build that we do in January or February, and we would have to have a pretty tight schedule. We would be rushing to get done in time. But if we did that, once we do that design bid build, if we don't like the price, we are in trouble because now we've pushed ourselves up against a schedule deadline, and we can't, we don't have time to change and flex and redesign something and, you know, remove this and that. So we at least have the flexibility here, like what we just did with landscaping and fencing, to say, this didn't work, go back to the drawing board and make it work for our budget.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What's your recommendation?
Staff recommends a motion to award bids for demolition, earthwork, site concrete, site utilities, and storm sewer to Crossland Construction Company for a total of $1,297,063.13.
Counselors.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. 7B, staff presentation on a proposed new Stillwater animal welfare facility, location and cost to be financed as a possible general obligation bond issue. Ms. Dodson.
Yes, sir. Okay, let me make sure.
Just to be clear on the agenda, there's no action that we will be taking on this item. This is a discussion item only.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dawn Dodson, Communications Director, and joining us this evening is Brian Thomas with 505 Architects. A few years ago, the TIME initiative was developed, together investing in municipal excellence. TIME for Stillwater is similar to MAPS for OKC, to identify needs that increase health and safety and enhance the quality of life for community members. Staff spent a lot of time with community members, stakeholders, and organizations identifying areas to address first. From these meetings, the immediate needs identified were streets and bridges, Fire Station Two relocation, and the Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility. Our community supported a revenue stream to address roadway concerns with the transportation sales tax in February 2022, the fire station in April 2022. And a few months ago, it was determined by council and leadership that it is time to address the animal welfare facility. There's no place like home. This applies to everyone. Imagine a community without an animal welfare. Animals would be left to fend for themselves with no help against starvation or disease control, and we would have no population control with animals, which would affect our public spaces. Ultimately, we want the best for our residents, animals, and community. We need an accommodating facility, and we can make this happen. Animal welfare services include code enforcement, they are under the Stillwater Police Department, education, reunification, removal of killed or injured wildlife, and investigation of animal cruelty cases. And with all adoptions, that includes spay and neuter, microchip, age-appropriate vaccinations, and treatment for parasites and prevention. Animal welfare services, these are statistics from 2022. So the intakes with 26 dog kennels was more than 1,000 dogs. Cats with only 19 catteries was more than 500, and then there are other animals. Rachel and her team have done an amazing job here with adoptions from 490 dogs, return to owner of 321, and she doesn't stop in Oklahoma. She pursues outside of Stillwater and pursues outside of our state to try and find homes for animals. We also worked with our friends at the Humane Society, and they took 107 dogs and 53 cats. Now, Rachel did contact us earlier today, and she's still working on 2023 stats because we're still in 2023. However, we have turned away oftentimes due to lack of space, more than 700 dogs, almost 300 cats, and other animals such as ducks and rabbits. Our animal welfare staff, they are professionally trained and they are certified officers. They safeguard public health and safety while eliminating neglect and abuse. They are community-centered through education opportunities, consultation, and they continue to provide guidance to pet owners. They also, again, enforce city ordinances. The current facility, it is significantly inadequate in size. It lacks appropriate kennel and quarantine spaces. It also lacks a medical care area. If you have been there, then you will also agree that the drainage system is too small and consistently clogs. The HVAC system is not designed to recycle clean air. It is poorly insulated, difficult to heat and cool, and it is not energy efficient. What we are needing to do is to decide the best direction to go. So we are asking our council to help us determine that. At this time, we are looking at a couple of different locations for a new animal welfare facility, and how do we fund that? Is that best to be a geo-bond to, for our current community capacity and anticipated growth? Does that look like 5 million? Does that look like 6.75 million? We do have options. And I'm going to ask Brian to come up and share those with you.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to come in and talk about these facilities. Over my 30 years, half of it has been with facilities like this that give back not only to the community, but also the furry friends that we have in there and the assets that it brings to the community. And I also want to commend you guys, many times, we're standing here after a budget's been established, after a site's picked up, and we get the pleasure of delivering something that cannot be attained because of the decisions that were made prior to that. So your staff has been wonderful about helping along in this process as long as your community. So, location, 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 location. When we started this process, you guys looked at every piece of property you own. From there, we narrowed down to eight sites that had the probability of some key components, and that led us to eight, to five sites to investigate further. And for there, ultimately, nailed it down to these two. One is the original location where it exists today, and the other one is a location out at Boomer Lake. Part of analyzing this is looking at the ability not only to obtain what you need to do today, but to be forward-thinking in the ability of the amenities that you'll need for tomorrow. I remember going to college here in 87, volunteering for a shelter, coming back in 94, and it did not change, but by then, it was already worn out. So fast forward 30 years later, if you've not been out there, like she said earlier, staff's doing an amazing job with what they are. From this location, these two, I'd like to talk a little about. The first one is on Main Street. Advantages of it, it's a known location. If you probably mentioned where the facility is, people will know where it is. It's located off of Main Drive, so it does have access and visibility from there. With this site, when we nail, one of the criteria that led us to bring this to you today is it does have some land available with those existing and adjacent to it is the animal welfare. But challenges to it is it's located next to a fire station. Animal's hearing is a lot more acute than ours. So the stress it puts on the animals that are already under stress is accelerated more by this location they're at. And that's been historically a condition of the site. Go today and watch when the sirens go off and watch what the animals do. If you're there to look for a new one, you're seeing an animal that's not in its comfort zone and already stressed more. Secondly, it's located adjacent to a FEMA flood zone. Those are very difficult to build into and extensive when it comes to just resources you would spend during the design process to try to amend that, to be able to build into that. Lastly, the site here and the amount of available land is going to allow us to build the smallest facility that we can, and we'll present that later. Very limiting the ability, the size and amenities we can do of the two options we're going to talk about later. Also preventing some of the site amenities that are so crucial that we've seen across the nation with these. And then limiting, in addition to the own site, is the future expansion to adjacent facilities because the land between is now that would be utilized for this. The second location that we were asked to look at as we went through it is located north of Boomer Lake. It's located in a natural setting up against the green area that's there. It's next to an amenity that is used quite a bit by the community for walkers and things that would also allow maybe some collaborative efforts with the shelter moving forward with its proximity. It has also got easy access and public infrastructure to where it's at. The east boundary on this slide, the very far, far right land identifies a 1% floodplain. From this diagram, you can see it's showing the ability to, not only with the building, but the smaller lines are what we predicted out 10 to 15 years. So when we were studying it with your staff, we weren't looking at today's needs. We were also projecting out the next 15, 20 years. So the site would allow, on there, you can see potential future expansion.
Excuse me, can I, can I ask you to define a 1% floodplain? I'm assuming that means it's very unlikely to flood?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, small attempt. But it's also acknowledged floodplain on there. So yes, we're not right up against a potential for flooding, but it does exist on, adjacent to the property proper. So we wanted to make sure that. And that's where Ghost and Associates was engaged to allow us to investigate a little bit more of that criteria when it did come up of having a floodplain. So compared to FEMA, this is a lot less chance to do that. There's about four feet of grade from where that is to even the existing grade. So there's a lot of elevation change, but relatively where the building's shown is a flat area, so it had minimal expense.
Okay, thank you.
The land is highly wooded, and as you'll see later in our cost estimates, we accounted for that, that there would be some clearing. I think there's some things that you'd want to do for future usability with that, just to clear out some of the woodiness. just to clear out some of the woody area for either trails or potential dog parks. Also, this site has ample opportunities for future expansion, amenities such as dog park, walking trails, future expansion of the building. A lot of times when we get this in front of council and this, particularly some of the recent ones like Midwest City, where an animal shelter such as this was located 100 feet from residential areas and people where people live is what's the noise level? Even though you've got dogs within the community and this perception of concentration. The Barso's facility would be primarily indoor kennels. But for animal safety, there are some outdoor runs that during the day, the animals could do that. So one of the studies we do when analyzing a site is to look at noise. So I'm going to go a little technical here, but when you talk, it's decimals. So in a voice such as this, run away, you'd be at about 60 decimals. Light traffic is about 50 decimals, so it's a little bit quieter. A dog barking is between 80 and 95 at the point of the mouth in there. So what this slide does with the different color rings is not taking into account that there's a building there, not taking into account that there's trees, just looking at the area on this site that if we were to locate animals outside in an outdoor pen and a dog barked, how does that sound drop off as you move away? And as we were looking at where to put the building potentially on the site, we wanted to see if we could, and we did, obtain where we could locate that. That larger red circle represents the noise of light traffic. So if the dog barked goes, by the time it hits the edge of that red circle, that's no louder than light traffic. That was to be consistent with the roadway that's adjacent there and there, the noise level of that would not be any greater. But like I said earlier here, it doesn't account that you've got a building between you and where the dogs would be when they are outside during limited time.
Is it safe to assume that many of those trees are going to stay there between the property, between the building?
That's one of the attributes that everybody really likes about this and discussions with it, the ability to retain that. And that building's positioned where it is, at least on this early concept, to maintain as many trees as we can. And I love trees. When we did the Westwood Elementary School years ago, that was an important thing. As we worked with the school district, we're constantly trying to keep those because that's a net set we don't need to spend the dollars for with the voters. We naturally have a wooded site to get landscaping.
And that foliage would help block some of that sound as well, I would assume, and absorb some of that sound?
Yes, oh, definitely, yes.
That's where I always had to with the question.
Is the sound of one dog barking the same as the sound of?
It amplifies, but the way the distance drops off, it's consistent with that.
This is a study based on having however many dogs that are going to be there?
Yes, yes, and looking at that. And then on the outside, like I said, the majority of the animals will be, and I'll talk about them in a minute, are indoor kennels. So this is the chance to get the dogs to, they'd go outside for exercise with a volunteer or as a protect, adoptee. There would be proposed on this site, we could fit, where the other site, it would be challenged, outdoor areas, what we would call get acquainted areas. So you could take a large animal out there, play frisbee with them and interact with them. And this site gives the opportunity for that, where the other one, we're kind of constrained for the amount of space. Costs. So the two things that are for consideration, I'll give more detail, are two options to share with you guys tonight. One is a $5 million, and another one is a $6.75 million. And I'll say this a couple of times through it all. These costs are total project costs. Everything it would take that if the citizen passed it, those are to allocate all the dollars to go from the point they vote to accept that, to move into the facility, and all the dollars that would be needed to make that happen. Fees, surveys, furniture. A lot of list goes on. Even if we had a legal for permit and all that, would be contained within these numbers.
And those dollars are today's dollars, though, right?
Those dollars would be, we anticipated those that, based on the schedule for the bond vote of when we would go out to bid, which was, I don't have it in front of me, whatever that schedule was. So we were escalating those for the time of bid.
Okay, thank you.
So if the go-bond shifts out, these numbers would need to be escalated. But based on the current proposed timeframe, I didn't have that in front of me. But these numbers were adjusted to account for that reality. The best the crystal ball will let us. I'll just tell you, cost is, in my 30 years, is one of the toughest times to estimate. We used to have a crystal ball. And then during the pandemic, my eight-year-old said, Dad, you got a snow globe. At the end of the pandemic, I think you got a magic eight ball. Every time you ask the question of when it's going to be done and how much it's cost, it'll ask you the question again. But I am delighted to say that the markets are stabilizing. You guys live in a world now. We hope interest rates don't continue to come up. We did include intenances into these numbers to try to anticipate that. But I don't want to stand before you and say that I am with absolute certainty. I can't predict the future that well if I could. But we're doing the same exercise with Stillwater Schools with their upcoming projects. So we're getting real-time data. And also, we just completed Animal Shelter recently, so we've got even newer numbers that continue to enforce the accuracy of these. The site, one of the things I want to do is the site at Boomer Lake can house either one of these facilities we're going to talk to. There's the land to do that and to do that successfully. The existing site can only house the facility, and you'll see in a minute, it's reducing the number of amenities that can be offered on the initial build and also restricts the ability in the future to add some of the amenities that are critical to these long-term that we are seeing that aren't fads but are really the norms. So three locations when we were looking at that is one of the criteria we did is we wanted to compare it to the existing location as we assess that. And I'll just run through some of these and the differences. By the existing location, could you add some of these? But you would, you'd add it on, I think it was an old horse that's ran its race. You'd spend a lot more money trying to rehabilitate the existing facility. And I also know you share that, part of that facility with the Humane Society. Between the two, you know, we can get a digital marquee at both of those. Public parking at the existing location is going to be restricted to probably a maximum of 10 to 12 spaces. And when you start thinking about public, people come to adopt a dog, and the amount of times it gets to do that quickly, your parking's going to restrict the number of people that can even park on the site. The new location, under the $6.7, allow to construct between 16 and 20 spaces with the ability in the future to add more. The dog staff parking at the new location, at the existing location, will get between six and eight parking spaces we give for staff and volunteers. If you haven't gone out there, it takes a lot of volunteers to run these facilities. So the more you can have, the more opportunity there is to socialize these animals, to reintroduce them to a new family. The new location, initially in that budget, we can do between 12 and 15 with the ability to add more in the future. Dog park area, paddock, and outdoor spaces. Each of those, if you've seen a lot of these, a dog park gives ability for the community to come back to the facility, to engage, to participate. But it also allows those animals that are buying time for a future home to be able to get socialized and improves their adoption rate almost by 30% if you can get amenities such as these. That new location, we're able to incorporate that into the $6.75 million, both because we have space and also just as we prioritize amenities, the value that brings. Paddock and loafing sheds, you guys do get animals that are a little bit bigger than what can be contained in the inside. So it gives the ability for those animals to be kept onsite on a temporary basis so they can be relocated to a facility with that. Outdoor exercise and training areas, you know, one of the things that's been interesting to see animal shelters as it's transitioned over the 30 years is it become more of, moved away from the mindset of pick up, see if you can find a homeowner in three days that liked him and then unfortunately have to euthanase him, to become an adoption area, to become a community asset. And the ability to have amenities that allow the public to come back and engage in these animals and communities increases the adoption rate, it increases the awareness. In reality, we see where you are euthanizing less and less and less. But also becomes an educational tool with the training area. You get an animal that may be challenged and things. You can come back to facility and with combinations and partnerships, give a place to get trained, kind of like when you get a newborn child and you come home and if you're privileged enough to have a family member or mother-in-law, they're able to help you, guide you through those steps. And that's where these outdoor areas and training areas allow you to do to be a resource and an amenity for what has become family members in society. Building features to get onto there is kennel capacity. One important thing I want to talk about the numbers is when we talk about 26 kennels capacity in the existing shelter, you're probably talking an area a little bit bigger than it's standing at for an animal to stay in. Both locations will have, it's a system called a T-kennel system that are larger in place. They're able to divide into two halves that allow you, an animal to be safely moved back and forth, give them ample room to go in there, reduces the stress in the animal, enhances the cleanability of the kennel, and also the safety of the staff with that. So even though the counts in the $5 million look comparable in reality, you're actually giving animals that, the sizes you have there are based on a 1981 standard. That's been, that was updated in '92 and continues to update. So this would apply with the National Veterinary recommends for an adequate amount of space for an animal to stay in there. Also, the new sized kennels will reduce the stress, which increases the adoption rate. The interesting thing about the new kennels, I always volunteer when I do new types of products. I went and worked at one of these facilities. And the old way to clean like 10 kennels would have taken me about an hour or two. In the new systems, the way they're designed in the kennels, in 15 minutes, I completed the process without having to have an animal removed for stress with that. And facility after facilities, Edmund, Midwest City that do that, when you think about long-term investment of the dollars between these two, also think about the long-term operating cost and what the efficiency of a large facility will gain you for your operating dollars. The cattery, we would go from, you see, with the existing, 19 to largers. These would move from cages to condos. They have similar systems, allow those cats to transverse between the areas of the kitteler box and sleeping without having to remove the animal. Also, the new catteries are designed to allow you to, the animals to reduce repertory with diseases that will commonly occur in facilities like this. The common cattery is an area where cats can come together. It'll have climbing trees, scratching posts. Basically, cats are social. It allows you to put a number of cats into a common room. I don't want to say like the pet store, but the class gloss. And they allow them to interact in a more social environment. Entry vestibules is just to be able to give a space. Your new facility, you walk in, you're there. This gives a place to control entry and exit, not only for people, but heating and cooling immediately and actually having a lobby in there. I like to think of these facilities that you're designing three-in-one. You're designing a place that's built like a jail. You've got to for the durability. You also got to build a facility that's compassionate for what a medical clinic does, the care and take of these. And last, you're designing a facility and building a facility for an adoption center. And all three of those coming together are, you guys have done some jails, I think the past were all expensive resources, but they also combining those successfully into a building. So things like lobbies and entry vestibules allow you to do that and separate these spaces. Intake and assessment, your current one doesn't have that ability. The two new proposed amounts would allow that. That's a space to, when the officers bring an animal or someone drops off an animal with just that one area, you can take them, intake them, assess them, and then move them into the right population within the facility versus immediately taking them from a car, barking and scared, and introducing them to the larger facility. The next one that you'll notice that's a difference, though, is that first one, if you go with a small facility, is where intake and assessment happens in this lobby, at the entry lobby, sorry, is a public surrender will allow you not to mix someone that's adopting an animal at the same line, somebody surrendering an animal in the same space. That has been huge in adoptions and just the perception of the facility in there that you can, give you the ability to treat those two differently because they are two different experiences, both for the animal and for the people to drop off and for the staff that's in taking that. The get acquainted rooms are just what they are. You're getting acquainted with, hopefully, a new family member on there. Your current one has no place to do that. Both these options would give the ability to incorporate two such spaces within the interior of the building. Enclosed vehicular loading sally port. The existing and the $5 million don't have that. What that is, is probably the simplest way to tell you guys, think of it as an oversized garage that the officer's able to bring a truck in, shut the door, and be able to unload or load those animals up in a controlled environment. They do get away from you once in a while, but allows that to be contained within there. It also gives them the ability, a place to, if they need to clean their trucks, they can do that within this space. But the most important aspect of it is it allows them to do that transfer in a safe spot that's not disruptive and is safe for both the officers and the animals. But it does take some square footage and costs to do that. I will say, every facility we've done, if they did not have that, they came back within three to six months and added it and had to find the money with that because it was such a value to the project. Dishwashing, food storage, and laundry, all three of them have that. The two facilities, the $5 million and the $6.5, have that. The $5 million will have just enough to handle what's the capacity of the facility is today. The $6.75 million has a little extra capacity to allow you to expand in the future and not have to expand those areas. It's just the nature of how the space would lay out on those. So the capacity of a dishwasher, the capacity for sinks and all that allow you, once you start to hit the kennel size of 45 to 60, you could go to 75 and not need to add additional equipment. There's just that threshold between those is that close. Utility and janitor, you'd think you'd have it in your existing, but it does not exist. Both those facilities would have that room to be able to do that. Supervisor officers and work rooms, the yes, no, this is a lot of shared space in your existing facility. And some of them, I don't know if I would call them an office as tight as they are in there. I don't know, they're about a closet. The new facilities have spaces dedicated to those. It varies between the two of what they are. But the supervisor would be immediately located around, behind the front desk, not only be able to supervise their staff, but to be that second backup to what goes on at the front of the desk because not everyone comes up rejoiced that you do have their animal. Some of them have opinions that maybe the animal was taken. And so that allows those front volunteers and staff to have that support at the supervisor. Also, given the space for the officers when they're in there, they've got to fill out reports and do things, so they would have a dedicated space, a bullpen as such, to be able to actually have a space to work and do their paperwork and assist with other operations within the facility. The euthanasia suite, you know, it's one of the roles that you guys have to do. You have to take in all the animals that come in. As the existing facility does not have that. Both these facilities would have that in there. The new location also gives the ability in the future, if you wanted to expand it, to be able to do onsite procedures where you could have beds and things come. So we pick up a little more space. Not much, but enough to get a table and things in that larger facility, which is another opportunity for outreach. Outdoor storage, you have it in your existing location. Once we expand the building on the existing site adjacent to it and the $5 million, that ability goes away. There's just, it's a choice between kennels and general storage. As we were making these assessments, that was one that just was not be able to achieve with the $5 million. But the larger site and the budget on this larger one would allow that critical. And that's just for things that go outside with that amenity, the outdoor space and the ability to engage and enhance that opportunity for adoptions that come along with that. Conference room and employee break room does not exist in the existing location. If you ever go work one of these, it's a tough job, you know? I mean, besides doing, there are therapists, there are janitorial, there are crowd control. All these are going on high stress. They give the ability for your staff to have a break from the dog environment is in there, but also to serve as a conference room. So if you wanted to have meetings, one of the cities, they would have some of their local organizations come and attend that. So the conference rooms gives the ability to do that and manage not only that, but the volunteers that volunteer with that. The last space is the community room. You don't have that at the existing location. You don't have that at the existing location. You would not be able to ever add that at the, the existing site location for the five million. There's just not the land to do that. But this community room is every, it's a room that allows not only some flexibility within the facility for educational deals or when you have dog days or that to do it, but it is also an indoor room that is a multi-purpose room. So it allows the facility to do outreach programs that when you adopt a dog, you can come in and get instructional. It's also a space, that local awareness, that if you had a small lawyers get together, ten or fifteen, and they want to come eat lunch one day, that they'll come here and they get awareness of what goes on. There were some articles on the other day that those rooms will increase adoption almost twenty to twenty-five percent by having that space available within the facility. And if you start to think about her numbers and the euthanasia and think about saving twenty to thirty percent more animal lives or placing them in homes, it's a pyramid. Once again, all the costs that we showed is everything, all inclusive, all inclusive resort or all inclusive purchase by the citizens of Stillwater. That dollar amount includes the ability to do that and also includes escalation. Like I say, starting, there it is, it's on this slide, to spring of 2025. These are just pictures of similar facilities. I was looking at when we were putting together, I told her, do you realize I'd done a couple of these facilities? But Admin Animal Facility, if you get a chance to go to that, that is one in 2006 they constructed and the budget on there was insufficient to do what they did. But they had to foresight to plan to make some such decisions that it was built with the infrastructure, but not the capacity. We got the privilege of fifteen years later, coming back on their second bond and saying we're now ready to finally implement the things that we couldn't do the first time, which are animal capacity and the ability to do adoptions on there. So the focus on that was to enhance that, and that's been an extreme success with that over, over the years. The other one, a more recent one, is Midwest City. This one's located right adjacent to the park. That was some of the things you guys are complaining about is where to locate that and location was pyramid onto this one to allow them to do programs. They have dog park night, a movie night where the families can come and bring your dogs. Across on here, they're able to build on some of the amenities with the existing walking trails. So, and then right behind this, you can't see that fixture, but the tree behind there is a, is a nice residential community across the street. There's an apartment community and that's where that assessment of acoustics came into there. And I did go down there last week. I was there for another and asked them, have they ever had any complaints with noise from dogs? And they do not. So that is, lets us know the numbers that we use for assessments do hold true. And in reality, they valued the opportunity to have the animal shelter next to that. Another one is here and, and more animal shelter. And what these are intending to use is the outside of the building will take on the character of the Stillwater community. So ultimately what your decision is that you guys make for the go bond, we'll prepare collateral material to allow that to represent what this facility should be for the citizens of Stillwater. So I've done a lot of talking and I'm going to hand it over in a minute, but if there's any questions just about the facility itself and the amenities, I'd be glad to answer this.
It's very thorough.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't know any of, well, most of those things, I didn't know you put in animal facilities. So that's good information.
Some of this information we also added in so that anyone watching from home, that they would kind of get the history and then kind of what we're up against here. So some of the funding challenges, Oklahoma is the only state that does not allow ad valorem for general fund. There are many unfunded state and federal mandates, we deal with that every day, and we have an aging infrastructure and growing community. So let's talk money. So really leaned in to Kristy Cluck and I greatly appreciate her for diving in and helping with this. So what we're looking at here is, I, let's go to the middle column and the area where it's the $200,000 home, just for example, and, and all of, you know, you can look at this and this as you dive in and determine what is best for us to move forward. If we can go to that estimated annual impact to property taxes, look at the real property taxable value, let's go to the $200,000 and just say, hey, we're going to go all in 6.75, but we're going to spread that out over 10 years. So if you own a property of approximately $200,000, what that means is that your yearly tax increase for the animal welfare, if passed, if for a 10-year bond, if for 6.75, you're looking at your taxes increasing by $55.63. To break that down per month, you're looking at $4.64. So, and, and obviously there's the five million on there, the five, seven, and 10-year breakdown, the property tax, you know, value. And, and so, but let's go with that example, just real quick, the 6.75, 10 years for a $200,000 home. The reason I'm asking you to use that example is because that's what we did for the fire station just recently, okay? So that was the example that we shared with our community when we were trying to explain how this would impact them. So the last municipal bond passed in April 22 was a fire station. That was for $9 million for a 20-year. So at most here, what we're talking about is a five, seven, 10. So right now, existing fire station two for a $200,000 property, that increased by $32.90. So that's what they're paying right now for fire station two, approximately $32.90. If we added the 6.75 for 10 years, then that means that for 10 years, they're paying the 32.90 plus that 55.63, so annually it would be 88.53. So they would, for 10 years, if we went this route, they would have a fire station two, they being our community, fire station two, animal welfare for 10 years. And then the animal welfare would drop off. And that's only if we went this route. This is just an example, but we wanted to kind of break that down for anyone that may be listening.
Why aren't we looking at 20 years for this bond as well?
I'm going to ask Kristy Cluck to come join me for that answer. Teamwork.
So Dawn may have relied on me for, to help her with this, but then I turned around and relied on our municipal financial advisors and their advice was a 10-year bond. That's very typical for a bond this size and, and that was their recommendation.
I mean, it's, we have the option potentially of any other timeframe?
Yes, the option is completely ours. That was just the recommendation that they had and so they put together those, those five, seven, and 10-year numbers.
I assume the 20-year bond on the fire station was also based on 20 years at bond, based on those similar recommendations?
I don't know. I honestly don't know where the 20 years came from. Wasn't a part of that decision.
We did consult the municipal financial advisors on that term and I believe the options there are up to 20 years.
Yes, that, that is correct.
But over 20 years, you're going to pay a whole lot more interest as well.
Quite true.
And I'll add one more thought to that, that you don't want to finance it longer than the life of the facility. So fire station's good for 20 years. Hopefully this is going to be good for more than 10.
How long have we been using the current one?
I know.
The current animal welfare, yeah, 40 years.
I'm sure we're designing for, for longer than 10 years of life.
Right, but at the end of 10 years, it may take a rework and overhaul in addition, so.
And as Brian shared earlier, the capacity for what was presented tonight is for 15 to 20-year projection of community growth and needs. So just backing up just a little bit, GO bonds, they are funded by ad valorem taxes, property taxes. They require a majority of vote by the voters. We're not exactly sure the pathway we would need to take with that. Our legal is looking into that. Most common way cities pay for large public projects. And again, prior to 2022, the last municipal bond pass was in 99 for 14.7 million and it was paid in full June 21. There's the example for that 10-year 6.75. And just so happened that when we were putting the presentation together, the front door fell off and Rachel was holding it together as she normally does. So we have quite a few people working on this collaboratively. I cannot express to you the teamwork that's going on over the past, since I walked in the door, they were already working on it and I appreciate serving with them. But we have Chief Jeff Watts here, Captain Roy Stevens, animal welfare leadership, Rachel Wasserman, Finance Director Kristy Cluck, our engineering team, Architect Brian, and myself, if we can answer any questions.
Just out of curiosity, for the 20-year versus a 10-year, obviously we'd be paying more interest because we'd be financing it longer, but is there a difference in the interest rate based on how many years you finance for? Okay. And that would be worth noting, just because usually a shorter time has a lower interest rate.
We will find out and bring it to the next time we discuss this.
I made a note of it, so we'll definitely look into that.
And I would also say, I mean, from what I have always heard, the animal welfare building that we have was almost immediately too small. And so I think when determining capacity, we do want a building that's going to accommodate future growth and future needs. And so I, I like the idea of spending a little more and having something that will serve our community going forward for a longer amount of time and, and, and allow for that growth. And I love the idea of the community centers within that and things like that where you can do community education.
Okay.
So Rachel, I got a question for you. Come on up. I am curious about the relationship between Humane Society and animal welfare. Could you explain that to me a little bit?
So currently, our, I'm sorry. So we serve the community, we enforce city ordinances versus we take in surrenders, we take in strays, we don't get to pick and choose what comes in. And then that is also why we have to euthanize on occasion if we take in a medical case or take in a very aggressive dog. Versus the Humane Society, they pull from different shelters in the area, us, Perry, Perkins, they go all over, and they can select what animals they want to pull and bring in because euthanasia is not an option for them. They keep that animal there until it is adopted unless something medically is just, they cannot save it. So does that answer the question? Are two different missions?
Yeah, basically. Do y'all work together, though?
Yes, so Jackie, I believe, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but last year they took 107 dogs from us, so we transferred them over to them and they, they were able to adopt those animals out. Currently, we work with a lot of other rescues in the state and outside of the state. The entire animal shelter world is in a crisis right now. We're all full.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I might add that we did ask Jackie to join us, the Humane Society and several organizations throughout our community, Visit Chamber, OSU, Stillwater Public Schools, Payne County Health Department, several entities came here. We went through this presentation and unanimously they were in support of this. So I would say that we've got a great relationship building and honestly, I think everyone here agrees, in order to have the healthiest and safest community, we need both an animal welfare facility and Humane Society.
I'd like to agree with what Counselor Hoffman said a while ago. Due to my profession, once we get to the point of talking about bonds, I'm going to be out of the room because I can't be in here. And so this is my opportunity to say, I endorse this project. I think it's important for our community. I think we should build it right, build, build for the future, go to the 6.75 million. I think that's the right direction for us. And I just, I completely endorse this project.
So what's, well, I mean, I, I think that the, the questions I would have were answered pretty well in terms of the site, the facility that we build, all that sort of thing. You know, my continued question about this is whether this is a, a project the community wants to fund, right? I mean, and, and what our plan is if we decide to say, yeah, we're going to build a $6.75 million animal control facility on the north side of Boomer Lake, getting the word out, getting people, you know, engaged, the folks who are going to campaign for a bond issue on this, on this front. Have we started to engage those folks? Do we know kind of how that, you know, are there people in the community who are saying, yes, we want to help make sure this gets passed?
Yes, I have heard from several. I know Rachel has heard from several, but many of our, what I consider infrastructure organizations throughout our community have already expressed, hey, how can we help? To get the word out, this is a necessity. So we definitely have plenty who are ready to join us as far as getting the word out and trying to spread that awareness and education. And at the end of the day, we believe in transparency and so we want to make sure and also to make sure that it's understandable. This is how it would affect your home and this is how it would affect our community. And so we definitely have a solid team, ready to go forward and explain that, whatever our mayor and council decide.
I had a, oh, sorry. Oh, I had a quick question about the dog park facility that could be an amenity to the larger build. Would that be a publicly accessible dog park or would it be strictly for the purposes of the animal welfare?
From the physical location where it could, it could be accessible. I'm not familiar with policies and things as you guys, when you do that, most communities, they treat it like a dog park with that and, and it is available with the public as part of a park. So that would be part that, I'm not sure, you know, what your guys' policies and things will be related to that. You may have some more clarity on it. But from a, from a design standpoint, there'd be nothing that allows, prohibit that, designing that to allow it to be both ways. Or even if we needed to design it, we've done that where it does have control, where certain sections or hours of it are restricted and it allow the opportunity for it to open up to the public afterwards, but it varies from community to community.
Just to answer that quickly, that absolutely is a plan, that it would be similar to the park we have on the south side of town and just open up a similar park on the north side of town.
I don't think we have a park facility in our town that's used more than that tiny dog park on, on West 12th. I think it's a, it's an amenity that our community is in need of more space for that type of use. So I love the idea of the functionality of having that for the animal welfare facility, but also our communities, just having that melded opportunity to bring our community to that space and have them have the benefit. It seems to me that could be a selling point out to the community.
In our early discussions of that with engineering and looking at that, we looked at the possibility of putting a second crosswalk across, across the roadway there to attach it to the, the walkways around Boomer Lake so people could exit Boomer Lake right into the dog park right there and be able to utilize that and.
Yeah, there's so many, so many people use the, the walk around Boomer as a, for their dogs already. I think it's such a neat idea to kind of co-locate that.
So what needs to happen next from the city council's perspective?
Moving forward, staff will come back to council on January 8th, 2024, for guidance on how to proceed.
From the council's office, what's that going to look like?
So tonight's just a presentation, no action. The idea is that there's an action item on the meeting on January 8th to select a location and an amount so that my office can work with bond council to draft a ballot language and come back to you on the 22nd, January 22nd, with a resolution calling the election for that purpose.
And that would end up being in?
It would be an April election.
April 2nd.
The resolution would be due to the election board by February 1st.
That's right.
That is our proposed timeline.
Is that when the school board election will be?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions for staff? We look forward to talking more about it next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much for the work that's gone into this so far. Certainly the architecture team and, and all of our folks at, at Animal Welfare and Police Department, tons of time and effort into, to getting this to the, to this point. And, and we appreciate that. And Kristy Driscoll, too. Where's Kristy?
I have Driscoll.
Oh, Kristy Cluck.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just like, why? What did she do?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, the city manager's new. Thank you, Kristy Cluck. All right. I'm going to find my place here. Item seven, no, eight. We're on to eight. Eight A, Resolution CC dash 2023 dash 45. This is a resolution approving action taken by the Solder Utilities Authority, authorizing the issuance of its promissory note in the principal amount of $37 million to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract and a sales tax agreement between the city and the authority and containing other provisions relating thereto. This is the sister resolution of what we passed earlier in SUA. Councilors?
I'm moved to adopt Resolution CC 2023 dash 45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item 8B is Resolution CC dash 2023 dash 46. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, authorizing the Child's Law Firm, PLLC, to file an action against Silverton Estates LLC, Bank First Guthrie, the Board of County Commissioners, the County Treasurer, the County Clerk of Payne County, Oklahoma, and any other necessary person, excuse me, any other persons or entities necessary to foreclose a lien for the cost of abatement on real property generally located at 1600, East 16th Avenue, City of Stillwater, Payne County, State of Oklahoma, previously declared a nuisance by the city council of the city of Stillwater and authorizing the city manager to take all actions reasonably necessary to effectuate the provisions of this resolution.
In January, council passed a resolution authorizing abatement of that public nuisance property. property. City staff has incurred expenses to perform that abatement as well as contracting to have some hydro seeding done and other stabilization efforts that were necessary in order to prevent discharge on adjacent properties. The city has expended about $31,000 and some change on that. We've filed the requisite liens. We've, council has certified those costs. We've made our demand for payment. We have not been paid, so I am seeking authorization from the council to, for outside counsel, Beth Ann Childs, to file suit against the necessary entities to proceed with foreclosure on that lien.
Counselors, any questions or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-46.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted five to zero. 8C, Resolution CC-2023-47. This is a resolution authorizing the subletting of Hangar 2 and Hangar 10 space to Crosswind Aviation LLC for the purpose of aeronautical activity to include aircraft rental to licensed private pilots for time building, sightseeing, and personal travel.
I'll be happy to introduce this and then if there are any questions, Kelly Reed, the airport director is here. The related entities, Stillwater Flight Center Incorporated and Stillwater Flight Center Hangar LLC are the owners, excuse me, the current lessees of those respective hangars. Both of those lease agreements require the written consent of, in order to sublet. And so the airport director has approved a new aeronautical activity application for that reason and is seeking authorization to allow the subletting of those hangars for that purpose.
Counselors, any questions or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2023-47.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item 9, ordinances. Everybody buckle up.
I've been waiting for this all night.
I assume you didn't find any authority for me not to have to read the entire title of this ordinance?
I would be willing to introduce it by title if you would like me to read it.
I got it.
Okay.
All right, this is ordinance number 3529 and ordinance amending Stillwater City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3 ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-52, adoption of the ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, and Section 10-53, amendments to the ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, specifically adoption of the ICC International Building Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 4 International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings, 2015 Edition, Section 1088, adoption of the ICC International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings, 2015 Edition, specifically adoption of the ICC International Residential Building Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 5 International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-111, adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-112, amendments to the ICC International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 8 Plumbing Standards, Division 2 International Plumbing Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-289, adoption of the ICC International Plumbing Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-290, amendments to the ICC International Plumbing Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Plumbing Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 9 International Fuel Gas Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-374, adoption of the ICC International Fuel Gas Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-375, amendments to the ICC International Fuel Gas Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Fuel Gas Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 10 Mechanical Standards, Division 1 International Mechanical Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-396, adoption of the ICC International Mechanical Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-397, amendments to the ICC International Mechanical Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Mechanical Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. 11 Electricity Division 2 National Electrical Code 2014 Edition, Section 10-485, adoption of the National Electrical Code 2014 Edition, NFPA 70-2014, and Section 10-486, amendments to the National Electrical Code 2014 Edition, NFPA 70-2014, specifically adopting the National Electrical Code 2020 Edition, NFPA 70-2020, and amendments thereto. Amending Chapter 20, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3 ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, Section 20-49, adoption of the ICC International Fire Code 2015 Edition, Section 20-50, amendments to the ICC International Fire Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Fire Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Well done. I mean.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you. What does all that mean, Jeff?
Thank you for reading that and thank you Attorney Payne for helping put all that together. We appreciate it. Jeff Matthews, Community Development Director and Building Official for the City of Stillwater. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is the, presented is the adoption of the new building codes for the City of Stillwater. This is to bring us into compliance with the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission that was formed in 2009. And so what you see before here tonight is the adoption of the new codes, again, bringing us into compliance. Over the last year, we've met with the Building Relation Committee on multiple occasions. We got full support of the Building Relations Committee. Then we've met with the Building Trades Board on two different occasions. On November the 14th, they voted with four to zero unanimously to recommend that City Council approve the codes that's presented to you tonight.
Counselors, questions, comments, or motion on the ordinance?
Well, just so you get to read this again another time, I move we advance this to second reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read. Please vote. That ordinance is advanced with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you to all the folks in our trades boards and the other folks who help make sure we've got up-to-date codes. Appreciate that. Item B, Ordinance 3530, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 16 Crimes, Miscellaneous Offenses and Provisions, Article 6 Offenses Involving Minors, Division 2 Prevention of Youth Access to Tobacco, Section 16-152, Definitions, and Section 16-153, furnishing of tobacco products to minors, and Section 16-154, purchase, receipt, or possession of tobacco products by minors, and Section 16-155, distribution of tobacco product samples to minors, and Section 16-156, sale of tobacco products except in original sealed packaging, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Ms. Carley?
This ordinance just updates our code provision to meet changes that were made to state law.
They kind of took over that, right? The enforcement of?
Yes.
Okay. Counselors, any questions or motion on the ordinance?
Motion to advance Ordinance 3530.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. Ordinance 3530 is advanced to second read with a vote of five to zero. Before we do reports, I'm going to jump down and do appointments. Item 12, if there's no objections. Item 12 is appointments. We will consider appointments to the Stillwater Medical Center Authority Board. The city council appoints that board. We have currently three members whose terms expire in 2024, Joe Haney, Gary Clark, and Beth Buchanan. Gary Clark has indicated his willingness to serve again while Joe Haney and Beth Buchanan have both indicated a desire to step down from that board, to not be reappointed. I will take a second just to recognize Joe and Beth for really, I think, it shows three terms. That's like nine years. I think they've both been on that board either prior times or in other capacities for a lot longer than that. Been very valuable members of the Stillwater Medical Authority Board, and we appreciate the service that they've provided over several years to our community. Joe has served on city council and the school board as well, so we really appreciate the service that they've provided and respect their decision to find other things to do with their time. So we have two open seats. We also have, just as an aside, there's an ex officio member of the board, the SMC Medical Staff Representative. Currently, Melinda Webb has been serving in that capacity. She's also indicated her desire to not be reappointed. So I will say that I, there's also a nominating committee at the Stillwater Medical Center Authority. They've looked at the applications that are on file for these, these spots, and the recommendation of the nominating committee is to appoint Gary Clark to a second term and then to appoint Cheryl Wilkinson and Denise Weaver to the two open seats. These would all be three-year terms that would begin in January of 2024. There's also a recommendation from the SMC staff to appoint Dr. Mark Payden as the Medical Staff Representative to the board. So I will move that we appoint Gary Clark, Cheryl Wilkinson, and Denise Weaver to seats on the Stillwater Medical Center Authority Board and appoint Mark Payden as the Medical Staff Representative.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, those folks are appointed to their terms on the Medical Center Board. Those terms will begin in January of 2024, and we appreciate the willingness of Cheryl and Denise to assume those positions as well and look forward to working with them. All right, that takes us back to reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Carley?
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS Section 307B4 involving confidential communication between the city council and city attorney concerning PFOS litigation, 3M Company, and DuPont de Mores and Company and other defendants involving paroxysmal fluorocles substances, contamination, and Ray, last time I had a cheat sheet out of pronouncing these things. PFOS litigation, MDL #218MN2873, United States District Court, District of South Carolina. It is the opinion of the city attorney that disclosure of this matter would seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the claim and conduct pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Carley. Ms. Meek? That's you. We'll do that later.
Okay. City offices will be closed on Monday, December 25th for Christmas holiday and on Monday, January 1st for New Year's Day. We have a few reminders and important information about waste management regarding the holiday season. Remember, we have blue trash bags available for purchase at the Convenience Collection Center, local on Q's, and the Valero on West 6th Avenue. These bags are a great option for residents when they run out of room in their trash cart. They can be placed beside the carts on your collection day and dropped off, or dropped off at the Convenience Collection Center. Also, residents are asked to properly dispose of their real Christmas trees after the holiday season by following the yard waste standards or dropping it off at the Convenience Collection Center. Please put wrapping paper in your regular trash cart. It is not a recyclable material. Matt Faulner, would you please join me in explaining extra services provided by waste management during this holiday season?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So this year, we're going to have a little bit of an adjustment change to our solid waste and recycling collection due to some staffing issues with our contracted disposal and recycling transfer facility. We will not be able to dump trash or recycling that day. So we are going to have to push the Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday forward one day for those weeks. So by example, if your collection day was on a Monday, the week of Christmas, it will be on Tuesday. If your collection day is on Friday, it will be on Saturday. And that goes for residential and commercial customers.
While you're up here, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the collection, the Convenience Collection Center. Our family had an oppor, we don't go very, very often, but we had an opportunity to go the other day to dispose of some carpet and it was, the people that were there were so extremely friendly and helpful. We got in and out so quickly. It just, what a great service that Convenience Collection system is for our, our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
For the work that's being done. But I also wanted to clarify, so we are a real Christmas tree family. So can we bring like the whole tree or does it also need to be chopped up like it would be if it was at our?
If you bring it to our collection center, you do not need to chop it up. You can bring the whole tree.
My husband's going to be so excited.
Just make sure you bring it in a pickup truck, no trailer. You can bring it down.
Okay, I'm bringing home good news from this council meeting. It's also my job to say, for more information, please go to stillwaterok.gov/wastemanagement or call them at 405-742-8269.
Thank you both. Dawn, do we have like a graphic that we're putting out that explains the trash thing? Okay. Yeah, good. That's one of the things I, I'm so excited to tell people that they wouldn't change for holidays, but unfortunately, factors outside of our control, we'll have to push trash collection. That's too bad. Hopefully, we can get back to the other schedule, but we'll see. All right, Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes. If you would like to get involved in your local government, we have many boards and committees for consideration. The city is accepting applications for city, citizen representatives to possibly serve on the Tourism Advisory Committee, Public Housing Authority, Board of Adjustment, Audit Committee, and Airport Advisory Board. Each board and committee consists of five to seven members with a term length of three years. For more information or to apply online, go to stillwaterok.gov/citizenboards. Is our process for this, is it still, I think for the longest time, it was just a generic application that went in for each of these boards with the new website? Is that still the same way? If they have an interest in a specific board, are they able to? There's a drop-down menu in order for them to express their interest in a specific board? Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
Tomorrow, Tuesday, December 19th, from 5:30 to 7, Stillwater, 5:30 PM to 7 PM, Stillwater Regional Airport will be hosting Swo for the holidays. Please bring the kids out to the airport to meet Santa and enjoy cookies and hot chocolate. Also, there will be opportunities to win $2,000 in American Airlines gift cards by entering the Fly Home for the Holidays with Visit Stillwater. $1,500 in American Airlines cards will be given to winners who have shopped local during the holiday season and submitted their receipts in the amount of $50 or more. However, $500 in gift cards will be awarded on December 19th at the Swo Holiday Event. For information on how to enter to win gift certificates, please go to visitstillwater.org. We hope you can join us on the 19th and as always, choose Stillwater Regional Airport for your traveling needs.
Absolutely. That's exciting. Go out there and win some gift cards. All right, Counselor Clark?
This holiday season, Stillwater Animal Welfare reminds those who are considering adding a furry friend to their family to adopt, not shop. If you would like to see what dogs and cats are in need of a good home, please stop by Animal Welfare at 1710 South Main Street or follow Stillwater Animal Welfare on Facebook. The staff members post regular updates on Facebook about available animals, educational tips, and animal health guidance.
That's a great tip. When the Boy Scouts were here earlier before the meeting, they asked about animal welfare and I made sure to tell them to ask for a puppy for Christmas. From animal, from Stillwater.
Well done.
Counselor Harden?
It is that time of year to apply or renew your burglar or fire alarm permit registration with the City of Stillwater. Permits are $6 per alarm on your property, residents who are at least 62 years of age, and also government entities do not pay fees. Applications are available at stillwaterok.gov and in person at the Stillwater Police Department right down the hall. We want to help in all ways possible to help keep you safe and your family protected and safe.
All right, thank you. I will remind everyone, we heard this a little while ago in the meeting, but we're excited to welcome everyone tomorrow to the ceremonial groundbreaking for new fire station number two. Tomorrow, Tuesday, December 19th at 10:00 AM at 1701 Northwestern Road. If you're curious, that's up by where the ropes course, the OSU ropes course is at the, it's also where everybody sits and watches the sunset.
Yes.
So that's where we'll be tomorrow morning at 10:00. It's another step in the right direction for our community as we continue to identify efforts to protect our residents. The new location will provide emergency services citywide with faster response times for Oklahoma State University and areas located on the west side of town. Again, many thanks to the voters who supported this time initiative. We hope everyone will be able to join us in person or on the Stillwater Fire Department Facebook for a live feed. Also, on the subject of fire, it's also that time of year to purchase a rural fire services contract if you live outside the city limits but are within the Stillwater Fire Department's response area. These contracts are only $100 and ensure that response fees for each fire incident on your property, if you're a contractor, will not exceed $2,000. All collected fees go through, go toward training, rescue tools, and other. go through, go toward training, rescue tools, and other fire equipment. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/fire. All right, that takes us to item 13 on the agenda, which is the executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session as requested by the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we'll now enter executive session. And we're back. Is there a motion to reconvene the Stillwater City Council?
Motion to reconvene?
Deacon?
We have a motion and a second. Please.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, we're now back in regular session of Stillwater City Council. Was there any recommended motion, action on executive session?
No recommended action.
Ooh, there's nothing else on the agenda, so is there an emotion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater City Council is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.